Good afternoon. I order the Houston County Board of Supervisors CIP Work Session for March 9th, 2:00 PM. Welcome, everyone. Are there any requests to postpone agenda items or additions, additions, or changes? It's hard to change the order of presentation when there's one item. I do have one addition. It's a resolution that the board of the programs have all a chance to review it. So the chair will entertain a motion and you will... Yeah. Be familiar with, if anybody wants to make a motion. It's a resolution that we're going to present here at the moment. And it's pretty good. But I understand, and then there's just how it's going to be. I'm moving from the motion that's presented.
You present.
That's presented.
Set.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? No, thank you. Okay. We'll, what we get to that. So Mr. Stany would come forward or have something to present to you.
All right. Whereas is the desire of Houston County Board of Supervisors to give well-deserved knowledge and recognition to Mr. Derek L. Stany, who has rendered exemplary service to the board supervisors, county staff, and citizens of Houston County. And whereas Derek Stany announced his resignation as Deputy County Administrator for Houston County after more than 11 years of diligent service. Whereas Derek Stany began his tenure for Houston County on August 1st, 2009 as Director of Parks and Recreation, Promoting Director of Parks and Recreation and Facilities on April 6, 2011. As Deputy County Administrator for Operations on December 1st, 2016. And served as interim County Administrator from July 1st, 2020 to September 13th, 2020. And whereas Derek Stany has overseen operations, general services, animal protection, parks and rights, has been instrumental in spearheading countless capos to talk special projects. And whereas Derek Stany has managed a multitude of major renovations and improvements to include Big Brother. Treasurer Commissioner for government offices, General Records Director of Office, Central High School, Culture and Education Center, Cultural Arts Center renovation, Blacksmith Shop, Agribusiness Center, Business Center, Houston History Center, Old Stone Jail, Houston Courthouse Freedom, Courthouse Security Building, Courthouse Courts Conference, Houston Animal Shelter and National Center, Oilville Park and Red Lion, Eight Eight and Landmark, Simon's Uber Park, Rides, to include Tucker Park, Primed Good Lunch, Art Tree Park, Carmax, Care State, Tucker Park, Dog Park, and pedestrian bridges, East Mill Park, Matthews Park, Dog Park, City of the French Mass. And since this point, creation of Parks and Rec Standard Operating Team, Parks and Rec Master Plan, 25-year public facilities master plan. And whereas first thing is there is some numerous awards to include the Marshall Mactaw Outstanding Assistant Award, Professional County Administrator of the Year of the June 2019, VCU Wilder School Excellence Governor, Virginia Government Community Enhancement Award 2019, two Governors, Electoral Excellence Awards, and seven Virginia Rec Recreation Parks Society Awards. And whereas Derek Stany has contributed to the success of Houston County by serving as a long-term liaison to the local government, Houston Pet Brothers, Houston Elementary PTA, Houston Central High School Committee, Friends of Houston Park, Virginia Recreation of Parks Society, Leadership Training Institute, Houston Historical Society, and Houston Youth Athletic Association. And whereas Derek Stany's ability to engage, his expertise, initiative, and willingness to take on large challenges is a testament to his ability to lead and inspire our communities. Whereas Derek Stany has demonstrated loyalty to the best interests of the county and its citizens. Now, the Derek form we resolve with Houston County Boards with Rogers hereby commend, recognize, and appreciate, and sincerely thanks Mr. Stany for the leadership and dedication of Houston County offers him their best wishes.
I think I'm asked. You kind of put me on the spot here this afternoon, so I'm trying to gather my thoughts. First of all, I think you might have left a couple of things off. That was loading through. I really, when I spoke to the board and talked to them about my intentions of leaving the county, I spoke to all five of them and I meant every word that I said in that. It has been the pleasure of my lifetime as a public servant in Houston, and I'm going to greatly miss working with all of you. And all of these things are great and they're great accomplishments, but they're not done by any one individual, done by a collective group of talented staff, engaged citizens, and supportive of the board of supervisors. And when you have all three of those things like we have in Houston, great things happen. And again, it's been a pleasure to be able to serve, to lead, and create with all the great folks in this county. I'm going to miss you all and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you. You were saying a little and a half years since 2009. That's a lot. I was asking, and he remembers every, every one of those projects, some of them more than others.
Absolutely.
Yeah. This feels real. So we'll jump right into the only item on the agenda and presentation discussion relating to our 2022-2046 improvement plan. I'll turn it over to Mr. Young. Well, whoever wants the mic. We'll see if we need the mic yet.
I've got a mic, so can you all hear me?
Yes.
All right. Today, we're going to go through county projects. And we will focus on the first year, that is the first year of CIP, which is the past year. And we'll also get five-year, the five-year plan. And the 25-year, we won't spend a lot of time on the after, but it is presented and now it's probably available in everything else. 25-year plan. I will introduce the different functional areas and then we'll let the department heads discuss some of their specific projects. So some of our planning considerations, we've got the life cycle, the building, the major operating system, price index, inflation, you know, what are happening to certain projects over time. That with, we evaluate alternatives, maintaining existing structures versus new construction. Some of the financial considerations we'll talk about at the end, the ability to cash fund certain projects, the FY '22 to '26 CIP B1, 95 million dollars of debt on the new Houston Elementary School and infrastructure improvements, a long-hold-away, new search court building, West Street Fire Station, and Houston High School addition, renovation. The borrowing is within the debt capacity and you maintain the current tax rate, you know, projection. Also, future referendum is part of the financial consideration. So the first area then of interest today is transportation. And we're going to focus on just first five years of transportation program. And I'm going to let Mr. Kilbough talk about transportation.
Thank you, Barbara. Todd Kilbough, Secretary of Community and Economic Development. And I'm sorry, Barbara, can you go back one step? Really just want to touch on one of these just real quick. Actually, maybe where you have two relevant streams at the moment, one straight from the top. That's just to put it in perspective, that's one more quarter, secondary six-year plan, that's one of the other areas where you're from VDOT. To do some of the small projects, it's not a very large pot of money, I believe, just a little over $70,000, but it has afforded us the opportunity to pay some of the unpaid heroes in the county that are actually colored birds. And I can tell you the citizens who are at that pay, they're very rich enough. Some of them didn't even know that this was even a project, but they're very happy that they're doing this. And if anybody wants to know all the more on the secondary six-year plan and next project, please don't be, no one will have to provide you with information. Essentially, you had Transportation Authority, that's the CDT, that's a new tax. And to touch on that real quick, we have, we just received a bunch of numbers from the CDT, which I'd like to go over with you real quick. The first number was for five months from the CDT. Now, we can still lie, because we remember that number was about $361,000. We haven't had a transportation budget before, so I do want to emphasize the fact that this amount of money has started handling some of our transportation needs and things, it's really, really important to us. So that was January 16,000. The catch of that is, that's five months of gas, but the sales tax portion of it, which is part of it, did not take in until the new budget. So it's a little hard to extrapolate from that number with four years of revenue reduction and stream. But I didn't have anything in front of me, $366,000 based on that. We received December's number, and that was $190,000, right? So extrapolating for 12 months off just that number is around $2.3 million. And then we received January's, and it was about a little bit less than December's, because December is Christmas, we thought we'd get a little more sales taxes as a result of that. And we were pleasantly surprised by the January, it was just a little bit higher than December at $202,000. So at the moment, it's a little difficult to tell now some of the projects that we've been placed these months to, because right now we're looking at a span of $800,000, $240,000, that's pretty recent. We're thinking this probably may be plenty closer to the CMT number, which we are very pleasantly surprised, because when the CDT was first picking up, we were told a projected number for us might be a little bit higher. So having said that, I'll keep going with this slide. What we're going to do is we're going to keep checking these numbers we're getting them out on the basis. We're going to keep tracking those numbers and see what we have after a 12-month period. Once we have all those numbers for a 12-month period, we can start to take those dollars and sort of overlay and include the projects that we have. And that doesn't necessarily need to be the projects on screen here, that can be like Charles Projects, Sidewalk Projects. So we're very excited about it. More to come, I think, we're still on the, that together. But the actual transportation projects, I've seen on screen for the next five years. A popular relaxed project on the December county that was identified, actually only for the major project, Oilville Interchange, there's a projected mountain. Ashland Road Interchange, which we know we've got major issues on, actually ties in with the mystery projects below, which are all around nature, like widening Ashland Road. More than anything, the interchange itself needs to be fixed. There is a lot of work to be done, because they're in time for all the landfills, the concrete plant, the asphalt plants, the land siege companies, all that, or is all those on Ashland Road, they're really bothering that interchange. And almost all the, or maybe the entire, most of the, so. Those are the transportation projects that we have outlined for the next five years. And I think, Barbara, that's my last slide, but if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer now. Or if it's part of the sort of this, this, this thing.
I can now.
Okay. If there's any questions, I'm happy to.
We don't mind. Just go back to that, oh, where they did, okay. So the... So I-64, at Oilville, and then Ashland Road Interchange, that's '26. But that's not the cost of the interchange, that's just the study.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Yeah, so the way transportation projects are outlined, it depends on where the funding source is. Typically, you allocate an engineering dollar, a right-of-way dollar, and the actual construction cost. That is correct, that is not the full dollars associated with that. I think I'll tell you now, the full project is supposed to be $29,000. It's a very expensive project, but it's a very big interchange. But yes, we did make, as a side note, smart scale applications to VDOT. That's another funding source that VDOT has for Oilville and Ashland Road. And last year, or sorry, two years ago, we did three child on the past projects. Always a bit divided on major vertical lines. If there are any questions.
Is the fairground roads, now I'm here because of the sweep 21.
It's, yeah, it was before that even. Yes, it's not on there as a result. But that's one thing that we have identified as the most immediate CDT, because we already know it's going to be over by July. So that's why it's not on there. Yes, sir. Okay.
Just, Mr. Jarrett, on the CIP, we're looking at the source of funding for all of those.
Sure. On the CIP, these projects, this is, you know, $23,000, $24,000, $21,000. And then you've got funding sources underneath this, and it looks like we're doing this, some of the sources are grants and donations. Does that, do that contribute? So how much of this then we paid for local tax dollars? No, okay, I see. Okay, thank you.
What do you think of the timing when we start looking at CBT funding projects? And I guess we probably have to have a discussion, that we want to use it to supplement, to improve scoring, or something. Do you have some thoughts on, because that'll be here before we know it.
I have lots of thoughts, and it's going to take me thirty minutes. But the truth is, yes, we have already, like I said, here as a transportation man, we've already discussed behind the scenes coming up with several different options before it's cheap. It could be applying the money immediately to Fairground Road, which is what we recommend first. But then after that, we could put some of the money on some of those smart scale applications. To more money the locality puts to it makes it more competitive, which means that there's a higher chance that we could win the smart scale applications, because we're competing with everyone, arguably the entire state. So for very small funding sources. It could be, we know we have some bridge problems in the county. It could be applied to that, it could be applied to trails or sidewalks and go with it. I guess long story short, we've been discussing in our journal, kind of coming up with a menu of things that we can pick and choose from to go ahead and apply this one to. Because we want to see, we know it's two-year policy here. We can start the plan really well for some of these projects, because Oilville Interchange, I think, is four grand. So in theory, in two years, it could be $20,000, so that's exciting to us.
So what is the number for the fairground? You're talking about fairground, the roundabout?
No, it's roundabouts. I'm just talking, that's our extension.
So you're talking about the extension, so do you know the shortfall?
At the moment? Do you guys realize the number, it's positive. But the number they told us, we still knew was about $1.1 million. But last we heard, they lowered it to approximately $400,000. I might correct me if I'm wrong, we have not received that, but they've done a lot of negotiation and bring the number down significantly. So once we have a, you can obviously, the number now.
Not yet, but as he said, it's like 1.19. They're initially short on 1.19, and it's looking like it should be about over that.
Plaza Drive, I have to do, disconnect to existing lines to give us some redundancy in our system and to connect the loop in our system to boost fire flows in that area. The other funding we asked for next year, just $105,000, is actually reimbursement to interfere some better as far as the water projects. It's the Sandy Hook Waterman Loop Project, so the extension going from the new roundabouts all the way up to Route 6, whereas the prevention design waterline installation, oil with that project. So it's reimbursement to them for doing that work for us, that's what that funding is for. Further out, looking at F123 through FY25, these projects again are derived from our master plan. The gist of a lot of the projects are closing water line, system loops, boosting fire flows. Other than that, we have to take any questions.
Morgan?
Jim. Without me doing the math, maybe you've already done it. A fair amount of these are just improvements versus new service. So we are just really kind of upgrading and improving what we have as opposed to, it's not very much, it's actually, you got you, that's new, right?
Correct. So if you got those, I'm sorry. If you got those water and sewer service projects, those are projects to get existing customers a service or upgrade their water systems specifically for that neighborhood. So those customers are currently in the concrete service districts. The gist of that project is to get them sewer service. The water system in their neighborhood is actually old, old well system that became used over years ago. And so that water service project is to upgrade that water system to a municipal quality water system and make our suppression for that area. Outside of that, you're absolutely correct, all the other projects are improvements to our system, whether we're improving sewer capacity, or water capacity, or fire flow ability in certain areas of the system. As I mentioned, closing loops, providing better redundancy in our system.
You don't mind?
What's the water shop, sir?
Okay, Plaza Drive. So you've got to split up the water of the sewer multiple years, which is fine. But once this is done in '24, it looks like the last of the Plaza Drive, if I'm looking at it right. No, wait a minute, no, '25. Does that mean water and sewer for the entire Plaza Drive will be included?
So what that means, once the waterline installation is complete, we anticipate running that waterline right away. So all of those parcels along Plaza Drive, and that's in Centerville right there where our central tank is. Yeah, all those parcels who have access to water circuits that currently don't. With the sewer projects, we anticipate extending sewers somehow to those parcels as well. Right now, sewer is in the area. We have to kick the engineering for that project all a few years out. Sewer is always a little more difficult to design, because you're relying on gravity. You have to take into consideration a lot of other factors versus the water design. So it's going to be a little more difficult, but we anticipate providing sewer service for those parcels as well and kicking that engineering off a few years out.
Right. And yeah, I see there's a few years out, so the water and sewer, all goes according to plan, entire public lot.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what, that's what I was going to hear. Thank you.
Mr. Jarrett, thank you. Couple things real quick. We're using connection fees on those.
Yes, sir.
Will there be additional connection fees generated from the, your diagnosed sewer, would it be?
That's what we're saying.
There will be, so there will be some revenue generated from some of these projects.
Replenish the pool. Second question, how are now, we just draw the connection fee pool of resources that we have to do these kind of projects? We, this, what's up there now, to take it in half, does it take it out of there, what, how much?
Right, right.
Any other questions?
Yeah, absolutely. So we have a detailed accounting for the connection fees we anticipate receiving from different developer projects. We take a look at every project that comes through, we anticipate connection fees, but the water gets here. We have that broken down in a very detailed table. We anticipate being able to run all of this through connection fees as they come in. So some years we have lower connection fees or less connection fees, and other some years we have millions and millions of dollars because of large commercial development, so.
Okay, so that's how we arrived at 175,611. So that's a projection of existing resources and anticipated resources in the building and able to move as that's getting through. And in addition, we can pull some of these forward, but you have to, to keep around a little bit, a little bit, is that?
That, that's absolutely right. We take a fresh look at these every year when we put the plan together. If we don't anticipate having any cash for the next year, we could definitely do some projects back. At the same time, if we anticipate having more cash than we originally thought, we could potentially improve the projects whole. So we take a look at that on a yearly basis. We can double check that and make sure our projections, we always have a budget conservatively. So we want to make sure our false projections are going to be under what we would have generated through the connection fees to make sure we can, we can cash fund these projects. At the same time, when we ask for funding, sometimes these projects take multiple years. So that also helps kind of balance out the, the tax laws.
Okay. And last one. And then this $10.7 million total investment, cash invested in the county's own systems, that's what the county is spending. During that same five-year hearing, developers presumably are bearing a hole as well.
Correct.
Investing money as well. And so this does show the other investment in building our own system is taking place with other people's money. That's it, it's over developers' money. So this really is, like, some of the candidates we have to invest in our, our connection fees.
Absolutely.
My fair credit issue.
Yes, sir.
And we'll get into that, other number might be, is it larger, is it longer than ours?
It would be, it would be probably quite a larger. So we also look for opportunities to work with developers, you know, if they're going to do a project in an area that we've got slated for improvement, we can also look at it with their projects. We usually reverse through, through connection fee credits in some, some way, shape, or form. But we also, we also look for ways to collaborate with development in the area to potentially change the scope of some of these projects to save your company.
You know, upside projects, I have a very...
Absolutely.
Because, thank you, slide.
Mr. Martin? So if you're going to have the city with water, my interest would be to use that ones to support the Fairgrounds Road extension.
Yes, sir.
So I see that, if you can't see it on screen, but on our sheet, it shows that we've spent $105,000 now for design.
Correct.
Just design, definitely the wrong business. That's a 10, like 10% of the overall was slated for 2027, $953,000. I thought Fairgrounds Road project was ceiling that, is this, this is mine?
So that's, we tried to line it up on some of the guidance we have already received from VDOT. They're a little further outs, you know, potentially, I don't know, you can see a little, little further than that. But I know that VDOT likes to line up their project, you know, they've done it front, but they also, I believe, built in quite efficient, you know, they have easements to work down on.
That's right, and they also like to post some projects, so this helps line out and get the management. So I guess my question is, we're, we, you're Mark, if this just the year CBT fund the Fairgrounds Road project, is it going to be won up until 27?
Trying to remember dates off the top of my head, sorry. I think it wasn't even going to be advertised until 2022, and I'm sorry, your question was?
So the question is, we're allocating to, which has to be part of the project, is it that project? Is it, if we're allocating money to... Is it the, if we're allocating money to, where we're assigning money to the C V P A funds this year for projects for twenty twenty-seven, the question is, if this project are kicking off for five years, should we be allocating that money to some of those happening sooner?
Oh, the hundred and five, well, again, they, they need that money now because they need the project fully funded now. They, they do want to do that, which is a little long and easy, because that's where it was, that's why it's recorded before. It wasn't until they got through significant engineering that they realized that the extension, the Fairgrounds Extension project, uh, was there. I'm sorry, I might have answered.
I'm not gonna bother asking, so. Part of that project for twenty twenty-seven is nine hundred and three thousand, but Fairgrounds Road should be done before that.
I didn't, I didn't have the twenty twenty-seven number, I'm sorry, maybe that's what I was looking for.
This is four years, man. He's talking about what we. So my, my idea is that the project could be done sooner, but if this is part of that project, are the dates aligned for those all of these projects?
It doesn't sound like that one is, so I think we need to look at that, I didn't see that one, I'm sorry, I didn't see that one, but I think we need to align that, yes.
Yeah, and, and we can receive more guidance from DDOT as they make their way through design. I know they typically have a six-year plan, but as we get more guidance from them, we can, you know, we can pull back our scholarship back depending on when they anticipate construction to happen.
And, and I'll look into the, their schedule, because I'm talking in terms without having their actual extension.
Sure, right, so I do apologize.
But we'll make sure they. If, if there's a follow-up on that, is, is that what's to make there? DDOT won't start a project until both their portion and the national are fully funded. So we need this earmark upfront before they're even start the project, which our earmark funds might have to be needed until later in the project. But they set aside at the front, they will start that.
That, that is true.
So there may be some, you know, intertemporal shift to the earmarking versus the seven, to get them started, is that?
Very true, but yes.
But if that's the case, then it's a little bit of a stretch to put that number in twenty-seven column. Uh, right, I mean, because we're talking about really balancing the five years, and it sounds like that nine hundred and something twenty-seven is very likely to get pulled in, isn't it? I think so, again, I, I need to go over the schedule and showing everyone, because that had the last one, so I didn't put that in. Mr. Shaw? Thank you. Okay.
Yes, sir.
A question, uh, on, on the courthouse area.
Yes, sir.
And again, I know this, this has changed my memory, though going back to the master plan, there were different options they considered. Uh, and I remember a number of like seven million at one point, because they were doing everything in the courthouse.
Right.
And I know that's been dialed back, so this is two-part question, what, explain what has been dialed back? And then I see the injector upgrade and then the courthouse capacity upgrade. And I'd like to just know, is that going to give us all of the sewer capacity that we anticipate under any growth scenario for the courthouse area?
It, it should get us very close. Uh, one thing that, that changed when we updated the utility master plan last year, our first five-year updates, is the, the anticipated sewer demands for the courthouse area. So, uh, originally, that's in twenty fifteen with the original master plan, some of those demand much, much higher. Uh, so the, some of the ways that, that the servicing area was drawn out was different, the methodology is a little bit different than the instructions of this time. Going off of normal, uh, development numbers and, and parcel we anticipate to develop, so that essentially that, that lowered the demands, our twenty-five-year demands for the courthouse area. Uh, we believe they're pretty whole-dotted and pretty realistic for the next twenty-five years. Uh, what that did is changed how big of an upgrade we need for that treatment plant. So, uh, we, we took that to the DOC, and, you know, originally you mentioned the seven million dollar figure. Uh, that seven million dollar figure, I believe, goes to a million dollars a day plant, which means that the footprint of plant need to be increased. Uh, much, much larger facilities need to be built. Uh, now that our demand for this is lower, uh, and more realistic, uh, we didn't need that big of an upgrade. So we took that to the DOC and their engineers and said, here's our master plan projections for the next twenty-five years. Uh, this is how much capacity we feel we need, what, uh, what can you do in your existing plant to do that? Their, their engineers look at that, uh, they're currently designing it right now, but it's really a lot of mechanical upgrades, a lot of process upgrades that they have uh, for waste water treatments. What that did is knowing that a much larger treatment plant doesn't necessarily have to be built now, we just needed to do mechanical upgrades and do some control upgrades, stuff like that. It, it brought the number way down from our original expectations, so at the end of the day, we anticipate saving, you know, quite a bit of money uh, with the upgrades we're currently designing now. We believe that will sort of us, uh, definitely for the next twenty-five years in the courthouse area.
Okay, so, so the only thing you make the one, the one point five, you know, the one point five, they were, and then FY twenty-nine, you have another one point five, same, same number, one?
We do, we do, so what's, uh.
What is that, what is that, I mean, you talked about mechanical upgrade, and I remember looking at a G I S map, where we saw like another, they had three units on the fourth one next to it. Is that what we're doing, is just turning all that forth?
That's right, that's right, so, uh, not last to get too, too down in the weeds, no waste water treaty with biological processes. Uh, so we want to make sure when we increase capacity, we can do it, uh, in a very planned-out way. Uh, we don't want to increase it to full capacity before we got that much waste water in the plant. So that's why the overall project was thrown down into two phases. The first phase is the mechanical and control upgrades, that will get us quite a bit more capacity. Uh, what you're talking about, what you're seeing sitting out there in FY twenty-nine, uh, is, uh, starting as the earmark, it's a, a sequence of back reactor. Uh, currently it's sitting empty, uh, phase two of the overall project is putting that in service. Uh, that will get us the rest of the capacity out of the existing.
Thank you, thank you.
All right.
Um, the last, the last four of these examples, there are others in there on the list, um, as, uh, it's for year twenty-four and then twenty-five. The twenty-four number is engineering preparation.
Correct.
And you said you estimate, you've estimated, uh, capacity for the courthouse area for twenty-five years?
Correct.
What is that number?
Uh, it's somewhere just under, um, four hundred thousand dollars per day. Uh, I, I could go back and look at the master plan, but it's just under four.
You're sure of the water or?
Yeah, for sewer, yes, sewer.
Do we have water?
Water, we currently have an allocation in the form of directions for a million.
Mr. Shaw? Yeah, on, on, uh, plaza project, you've got, um, design, twenty-two, and twenty-three waters that go in, and then following in twenty-four, you've got sewer, and then twenty-five, uh, putting sewer in. Is that the entirety of Plaza Drive?
Correct.
So that's gonna start at two fifty?
That was my first step.
At two fifty, circle all the way around to the other end, and will it do, um, no, hockey dance goes across broad, that's.
So the, the, the scope of that project is, is making a waterline connection from our existing Centerville tank all the way over to Ashland Road, and there's dugouts, uh, for the water lines, um, at each of those locations. We'll basically be building the bridge between those two locations to, to, you know, create a system loop.
Okay, so the entire shopping center project is gonna have water and sewer about it?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Uh, the same with sewer, several years later. All right.
My, my ears informed, and thank you.
I'd say much.
Absolutely.
Okay, now we will go on to county projects. So the, um, FY twenty-two, county C I P is according to six point eight one dollars, and you can see the bulk of it was, um, did education. The five-year, um, half of it is education, and then a good part that of course is judicial admin with the courthouse and prior restroom. The first, uh, functional area we discussed is facilities management. Um, the first two items are recurring items that we, every year, facilities are on maintenance, two hundred dollars. And, um, the county vehicle replacement, a hundred and twenty-five, those are, um, annual allocations to maintain our facilities and our vehicle replacement cycle. And then I'll let Mr. Stanning talk about the next three items.
Okay, the next three items, uh, on the facilities management portion, C I P for FY twenty-two include three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of the Dukes and Sports Complex. That's actually related to the replacement lighting project. In, in case, in case you're not aware, the football field located behind Works Direct Building and the administration building, that lighting system's approximately thirty-five, forty years old, and is in desperate need of being replaced. Uh, we're replacing the lighting system behind this building within the next, uh, three to four weeks. But that one is in dire need of replacement as well, we've had significant issues with it throughout the years, constantly having to go and, and dig up, uh, bad connections underground, it's got a lot of light pollution associated with it, and costs tremendous amount of money uh, to run those lights so that three hundred and twenty-five thousand will replace the existing, uh, system with an LED, uh, dark sky compliant, uh, lighting system. Uh, so the, the next item on the list is library, and that's the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar, uh, proper related improvements to increase capacity at the Dukes and Library. Uh, below that is the Central High School, one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar, uh, project. That's related to replacing the gym floor in the gymnasium located just behind us here in the theater. The floor, you may recall that you did appropriate some money to replace the gym floor at the sports complex. The buildings were built the exact same time, back in, I believe, nineteen sixty-seven, and those floors are, I believe, original. They've been sanding so many times, they've outlived their useful life, they have to be replaced now, and you can't sand them anymore. So the hundred and seventy-five thousand will allow us to go in and finish that gym floor replacement. Now, if you'd like to take any questions.
So, um, the library, that's proper's?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
So that's offset by, we haven't, that much will be added to the proper's?
I believe right now the three hundred and fifty thousand is not identified specifically by proper.
Awesome.
It's capacity expansion, and we, we've, uh, we've looked at different ways to, to work with the library to expand capacity. We may have an opportunity to expand capacity on the existing building, or there may be other opportunities for satellite locations, like a kiosk-type of unit, we've looked at those things, we're just trying to get clarity on how good we're, we're extending that capacity to the library, is the best way to use it?
That's under pump down the back door there?
Yes, sir, we did.
Do you have a square footage of the master light?
Correct.
That's probably the last of the library on the right on proper's. Because it's not electrical anymore.
That's correct, I mean, then, we do have a balance of, of, right, currently about three hundred and fifty, but we're not collecting, it's not part of.
It's not, it is.
We're quite, you know, small amount based on the proper's, right?
You know, you use it a little bit.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's true, it was just a correction, we know.
You have to use it when it starts, here's time, is that time coming here, or is that?
Yes, and I believe it's twelve years from the start, and.
No, it's twelve years from the last time you collect a proper from that development. So if it's a per residential dwelling unit proper, you, twelve years won't start from after, so full of that one is, hey. If it's a one-time proper, uh, which typically only libraries work in cases of transportation plus, but libraries are current.
Do we know if any next year or two is gonna start? Or are we?
And that, that's why we put the, the project here, because we, we need to start using them in the next, it will expire in the next couple of years.
Exactly. Yeah. Yep.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and then we will go on to, um, judicial administration, and we'll go ahead and look at the five years in this, um, in this situation. And I think it would call that last year as a solution to, to getting a, a courthouse built in, in a summer time, I mean, and we had to just perhaps splitting it up into two projects. This year, um, we moved it forward into one project, um, recognizing that building might, construction, uh, constructing a building in two, two parts is not ideal or not efficient. Um, and also with the lowering of, of our estimate of debt interest, we were able to afford more, associate that. So we did move it up, and, and these are also updated numbers, because, um, we did go back to the study and, uh, to update these numbers with more current construction numbers. So this is our current plan for constructing the courthouse, the new Circuit Court building, and if you have any questions, though, I'm ready to have a turn to Mr. Stanning there.
So, so how are we splitting it up, uh, the twenty-three, is that all planning and engineering, construction, or?
Sure, just to, just to give you an overview of how this funding is broken down, the previous five hundred thousand dollar funding was primarily related to land acquisition. And, uh, we've already acquired several parcels of land there on the corner of Route Six and Courthouse Circle. The FY twenty-three money would be primarily related to design services, and then FY twenty-four would actually be the construction of this. And as, as Mr. Lacher mentioned, we did go back to our space study consults. The previous space study had been completed in twenty seventeen, and we had them update them, update these figures for twenty twenty-one numbers and build in escalators to give us a, an actual cost estimate that was reliable, uh, that would be included in the C I P.
Is that like a two-year build out?
It, it's approximately an eighteen to twenty-one month construction process.
Nice, what a good one.
Move to your value engineer, that's more than that. Value engineer. So, so have you, have you gotten the information, is it gonna be Circuit Court, John issue court, junior optimist relations court, all the courthouses, or we gotta have?
All the above, uh, the, the goal is to actually house all of those court functions into one building. Right now, we're in like a campus-style layout, which I think we can all agree, in addition to having a two-hundred-year-old, uh, Circuit Court is the most ideal way from a security and operational standpoint to operate a court system. So the idea was to bring everybody in under the same.
Board's office, record room, hold.
Yes, sir.
Commonwealth, Commonwealth attorney gonna be in building?
Yes, sir, that's correct. And then we would repurpose the remainder of the courthouse complex for other uses at long-term, uh, uses for county functions for the county space.
So where is the location of the new courthouse gonna be in that, in that complex?
We, we had presented to the board a couple of different scenarios, uh, there were three scenarios that were presented to the board about three years ago. The first one was literally right behind the existing Circuit Court. The second option was in the back attached to where Fire Rescue and school administration is now. And the other option was up on that front corner there at courthouse circle on Route Six. So we still have three options that, that can potentially be utilized, and we really felt like the area immediately behind the Circuit Court would not work well for, for myriad of reasons, I mean, just interrupting, uh, court operations during construction would be a tremendous undertaking and headache. Whereas the other two options were really what we felt would be the best way to go from a design and construction standpoint.
Well, I, I just know this, this is, this is gonna be a bigger project, but I hope we have engagement and opportunities with the clerk, the judge, the judges, uh, chair's office.
As part of that one point five million dollar process of design, we would engage all of those, uh, functions of the court and, and of our, our judicial system to make sure that we're capturing all their needs from a space standpoint, from an operational standpoint, and then build out that plan about what's right.
Looking forward to it, that's, that's important, that's gonna be kind of a, a marquee thing for the, for our courthouse area. Any, any other questions on the judicial administration? So we're, we're meeting, this looks to be like a meeting of Judge Sanders, preferred timeline is what?
That's correct.
Pretty good thing.
Good thing.
Just in case I ever have to go in front of them, I'll let you say that. We did our part. Hopefully, never comes back.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. More other questions, Fire Rescue?
Fire Rescue, um, I have to say that Fire Rescue, I work into this plan, and, uh, and really, I believe.
Fire and Rescue, I have to say that Fire and Rescue, I work into this plan and really, I believe, does something for their needs in the next several years.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We appreciate your opportunity to explain the Fire Rescue Capital Development Program for the first FY22. I'll tell you that we worked very closely with Ms. Collier and Ms. Young. We got our projects in the CIP, we actually decided to add five percent inflation to all our projects going out from year to year. This was advice received from that class manufacturers and other folks in that business so that we would not run into a situation where a future project will be permanently underfunded. So if you see that looking at the bigger picture, you'll see that the numbers are increasing at that five percent inflation that we built into every one of our projects. For FY22, we have a variety of projects, some of which were actually carryover from FY21. Place some of the projects in whole because of the coronavirus situation that we were in. We have brought those forward in FY22. At the top of the page is the Emergency Response SUV Eagle replacement. These are expat cars. Fire Rescue currently operates two twenty thirteen condos, one is approaching two hundred thousand miles. And we have also, I think it's a two thousand more wagons to stay here. So we feel that we need to replace these two of these S&amp;P's and FY22, one of which was capable to be replaced and we pushed off the present budget here. The other project located is having rescue tools. This is a continuation of a five-year program to sanitize and weigh all of their hot dog extrication equipment that we had, where we had rescue trucks that we used for pre-patient staff. Trapping all of bills to one common brand so that we have their operating between the equivalent. The actual project has progressed along very nicely. And companies four, five, and six and two are completely done. And we did a portion of company one and a portion of company three. And so with the money that you see this, the purpose of FY22 and FY23, that actually finished that hot dog rescue and sanitation project that was started several years ago. Ambulance replacement, this is the ambulance that followed along with the package of ambulance since the two officers aggressively approved for us, three of which were wearing vehicles, and two were recharged and were remounts. And so this is that fifth ambulance that we had discussed earlier in the year. Deputy Chief Watkins is submitting today the Rescue Support Assistance Fund grant that could be pitched with under fifty percent of the ambulance. We will circle the trial and hope that we get awarded the grant which reduces the impact on the county. Patient stretchers, we actually started to introduce a stretcher in the cost of every ambulance, but in FY21, we had thirty-six thousand dollars in the CIP for the power stretchers. And so we actually carried that across with inflation, FY22, to two more power stretchers. And you see in the power stretcher of each ambulance, we'll cover that going forward. We can eliminate the power stretchers in separate lines in the CIPs. Fire rescue turnout gear, we have approximately fifty career members and about a hundred and sixty volunteers in all of that turnout gear comes out. And FPA requires a gear to be replaced at least within years. Or in some situations, the gear gets a lot more use than that and has to be replaced much sooner. So this will allow us to rotate that gear and also put us in a position where we can start to acquire two sets of turnout gear for each firefighter, which is a cancer prevention initiative. So your gear is dirty, wash your gear and change it to a brand new or a clean set gear for the rest of your shift and you're not wearing the gear that has the pathogens and so forth from the last fire. The fire engine replacement, if you guys recall, all of our findings were purchased new in two thousand and six and we're starting to see the CAs to replace those. And so this will be the first of that progression of the fire engines. And the cost of the fire engine has significantly gone up, but seven hundred and thirty-five thousand is where we leave and we'll be able to start and be able to go within that figure. When you buy a new fire engine, you have to have new woodwork hose, a vent hose, it's a while at home. It's about seven thousand dollars and you have to put all the attack lines on it, it's another eight thousand. So what we have done is built a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in fire suppression equipment. That is hopefully to cover that fire engine, but also we will be seeing two fire engines created this year. The tanker will be here next week and ladder sharp will appear in the summer. And you cannot have one built anywhere else other than there, hopefully, unless you recover the vehicle from the city. So we feel like we can certainly state within those budget line and just took those years. Our big project, we talked about that already, is the Fire Rescue Training Center. Fire Rescue Training Center was opened new in nineteen eighty-one. They're a structural burning building, but we do live fire training in it. It's outsourced, all types of training. We stopped burning that building as of twenty fourteen and the building is in need of repair. The good news is an engineering firm has assessed the building and they tell us that it is worthy of investment to repair and possibly to the point we can conduct a live fire training in that building again. The other component at the Training Center are modular classrooms. The classrooms that we operate there today have the reverse from other uses in the county and state levels. One is a terminated classroom in the United and BSC. And the other is a home of class, four buildings, one's for a county office and a building. And so we would like to replace our modular classrooms. Certainly there will be site improvements that we made there at the Fire Training Center that could certainly be costly. And also if there's money remaining in that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we need some storage space for all the logistical items that we support our operations, for some of the different places across the county. And I'd be glad to add to any questions.
Or don't just have any questions?
Yes, Deputy Chief person. Obviously, we're in District Two now and I know there's a great map you showed us maybe a couple of presentations ago of covered areas and there's a huge gap in covered areas in District Two. So it's a little disappointing to see we're in ten years before we get fire station out here in District. I think, I'm not sure, Ms. Hunter, would you fill up and say, I think here the first time we have more building in the western part of the county than the eastern part of the county. So seeing tremendous growth, I would really like to see, we're receiving a lot of people bother getting that gap. So I appreciate it for part of this, all of this is important, but I'd love to see if we can somehow figure out where we're in that.
Well, we certainly don't disagree with you and we're open that you'd say that you'd like to move that forward a little bit. We'll tell you that Deputy County Administrator Stanley has been actively pursuing property acquisition in that area so that we can certainly move forward with that fire station. I do agree with you, that is an area that we do cover now, but we can cover much better and reduce response times further if we had a station there. I think we're trying to be very busy. I did want to say one more thing about new fire stations, just so that you continue to hear this, so that you're not from long. But when we open a new fire station in future, we will not have a volunteer base that's already there. So we plan, we plan on at least fifteen firefighters, career firefighters to open that station. Three on the fire and then our goal, we have four, we should work with three continually in ambulance. And out there is fifteen firefighters, we would have captain and we'd have two lieutenants and we would be supervision on each of their shifts. So that is one of these petty costs that stick up on you and appears, will appear in the staffing plan. So if District Two Fire Station is moved forward over West Creek, we have to build that staffing in. And some of them will try to recruit volunteers, but I think we can't start off like we, maybe having other places like something in six, knowing we have six.
Mr. Chair, I think we've been pursuing this to overstaff and over equip on a current working board before you break down. A different order, so we need more improvement on some of that. That way we know the budget and we stand with the personnel, the equipment, the training. So if you do that, if you're not opening in scratch and have a hundred and fifty people at once, you know, the equipment all at once, our budget's only going to get that in it. The other thing is, it really doesn't do us any good to have a lot of working orders, a lot of factories, and a lot of personnel not trained. And so one of the things that, if I could be a little bit, and this is by training sense, I'd like to have our training equally as good as our equipment and our personnel staffing and all so that they show up as like their first fire, first rodeo, first whatever. So you mentioned earlier about we can put some money into this location and get better use out of it and it's doing it longer term than maybe these. And there's going to be some research, study, land acquisition, engineering, some other ramp up kind of stuff before you get to a point of, you know, opening it. And I didn't see anything, we have the seven fifty here, I guess, as to screw something we have. There's really no money earmarked for taking us to the next level, I guess, or something.
Well, it's actually, it's fairly out from the slices and this one I have?
It's further out in the, if you look in on the twenty-five years CIP, it is unfortunately further out beyond the ten years.
And that's part of my concern is that we're focused on building West Creek, building District Two, a lot of equipment. If you keep going with that, and we haven't kept up pace with the training, we've got to push that a little way out. I guess I do the training is a very important part of this. And I agree, I agree that. But then I'm wondering if you can plug that in. Again, that's one that I'd like to see going forward, it's not once the training keeps up pace with a very important question for personnel.
Mr. Peterson, to those points, I'd love to share the preseason, we've talked, and I think both departments have equal needs for a public safety training center. And based on current events in the community, it's not a parry of us, that we should have other facilities for command and EOC and communications as well. It just may make sense to follow all that in the project.
Yeah, I absolutely agree with you. My voice of mine is interested in having that, what I'm parallel with the other expenses we're doing here.
I believe the District Two Fire Station comes up in FY...
The District Two FY...
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, yes, in this way. The Fire Training Center...
Is way out in thirty-six. It's also, you know, what, you know, one thing we have thoroughly that idea is what would happen when everybody moves into the courthouse, the new courthouse? What kind of building and facility would that lead as well for a training center? Those are all things we want to explore and perhaps we can go into a little bit.
I don't know, I just, I think I'd like to really express my strong support for both Company Two and the Fire St... Yeah, Company Two, District Two.
District Two.
District Two and the Fire Rescue Training, the Training Center, are training to be moved way out. I think those will become much sooner, in my opinion. That rather than do something else around maybe, I'm going to do it after probably. And with, just not much sense.
I agree with the last one, but again, I would want to play a grand, a version of what we see there. But then, I recently, already in the house, it didn't find it, and so, so let me say... I agree, you said, pray that, pray that it follows. Any other questions, Chief person? Thank you, Chief, as always.
That is, we appreciate it.
Thank you for everything you've said.
Any questions? Our certification, there's really nothing in the next two years, so I don't know if you have any questions there or any comments, but no, no project coming up.
Is there, there's certainly ideas and thoughts out there, they just didn't make...
That's correct. We did, Ms. Collier, remember we visited the CIP, we did evaluate some of the park projects and just pushed those out to outer years, primarily related to the East End Park. That park was pushed out and the actual amount, I don't know, was reduced as well for previous years. So what you see on the screen now in FY24, thirty thousand dollars for Tucker Park could actually be some, just some basic amenity enhancements to the site, including playgrounds, restrooms, things of that nature. And then in Hidden Rock would just be general field upgrades, fencing replacements, irrigation, turf and curbs, things along those lines.
So we have previous, previous funding, it's not showing there. The East End Trails on the larger sheet here, East End Trails has a hundred thousand previous funding.
Yes, that was, previous funding for that project was done back, I believe, two thousand and fifteen, somewhere a few, I don't know if you remember or not.
Yeah, that's right, that's twenty sixteen.
Twenty sixteen that we identified a hundred thousand dollars for the East End Trails. You may recall that we did come to you all in a previous meeting and asked for appropriation of proper money to help construct the, it was twenty fifteen. It's BDO, it's grant money related to alternative transportation through BDO as well as proper money. That actually completely pays in ones.
I guess, I guess maybe just a simple way to ask, follow my, is East End Trails is not one to just, is standing still for the next five years?
No, sir. The idea is once we get through the design process, then we go into the construction piece of that. And from what I understand, we are, we're ahead of the game in researches process, as part of BDO process related to it. So in other words, we have to go through the design process, redefine the scope, and finalize our plan and meet those timelines before we can go ahead and do the design work and embed it out for construction. Well, it's part, the previous hundred thousand dollars was wrapped into the grant.
I guess the question here was, seven, five years, you know, it's...
It's already working. It's already sitting in that bucket.
East End, it's part of that move to the East End, it's a picture? So maybe a bigger picture for our burden? Because it shows previous funding of a hundred thousand, we're looking at a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar cost. Is some of that delta, the six fifty, is some of that salary funds?
The reason it says previous is just because through the normal budget process, there was only a hundred thousand allocated. But then we went back to you this year and then asked for one. So that money is there for the East End Trail Phase One. So it just doesn't indicate it because it didn't go through the normal budget process.
Two hundred thousand, so it's two hundred thousand, the match fifty, the board allocated an extra fifty, which gives four hundred thousand. And then once we went through design and figured out that the bridge that we talked about needed to be a lot taller and longer, so Joe Paul's, we decided to pay that, that's when we decided to use a motion bottom line for it. So that's, there's a few different implications across the, across the years, but that sounds, that sounds working now. Okay, so this, this, when we look at these numbers, you really, we should assume that this is what we're spending necessarily. It doesn't equal what we're spending with what we're setting aside.
Correct, it's what we set aside exactly. And we try to pre-fund, like you'll see once we get through Chanel entry, that, you know, we've already put this one point five million dollars and that money is already there. So we just try to indicate that we have set the money aside for this project.
And the reason this one didn't show up that way, just, like you said, just sort of the methodology of that prior funding just didn't work its way, because it would obviously be helpful to understand previous funding number.
Yes, and East End Trails is, yes, because the money that has been here for East End Trails is much further out, so at that point, that would be another phase or...
Right, you have like, in thirty-two, you have one point two million.
Right.
Is that for the northern part?
That's to be determined at this point. We have an option of continuing south or going north. Right now, we, our recommendation would actually be to go to north with that project. With the funding that's been identified in the CIP. Right now, the page one, just to give you an idea, if you go to ER, CER, where Tucko Creek dead ends, that access road to the pump station, we could utilize as a parking area. And then you would access the trail or the terminals of that. And then it would stretch and follow the wetlands of the creek back just to make a gate and then cross Little Tucko Creek and then move kind of zigzag east and then curve around. gate and cross Little Tucko Creek, and then move kind of zigzag east and curve around the creek, and, and terminate right there behind Hardwood. That's the phase one portion of the trail. In one way, it's a one-way segment of about a mile and a half. So the, the next phase would actually, instead of turning right, parking lot, head south, Hardwood would return left, head north. And then that will follow up to where the creek kind splits into a water. That's, that's what we've identified as phase two of that trail.
Do you have any question?
And northward rolls.
When would that be? And the three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40. One person says it's a lot, one person says it's a lot more.
It's a lot more.
Yeah, it's not much, it's never getting. Depends on what district it's in. Thank, thank you all, okay. They expect this.
Information system, the first few items are, are routine, are recurring placement cycles. I think there's things that are new on there, the next generation 911, that's a state project that's still ongoing. The 40,000 for the voiceover internet cloud solution, that is a new project. And I think maybe you want to, Mr. Buzzer might want to discuss the G I S aerial imagery update, because that's never been on C I P before.
Sure. So the state flies every five years automatically for imagery for the state.
Just hold it close.
The state flies every five years for imagery for the state, and it provides us some of that imagery period. But it's pretty low balling. What they give is, I think it's five feet, in five feet intervals, to begin with, I can't remember, but we, we like the better imagery for our G I S site, to help split our identifying stuff better. And we also like to do a couple more of that. Will likely buy upgrades with what they fly and they take the images up for road contours and building structures. So some of this money is going towards some of these upgrades that we've been thinking about and I've worked with, but Sheriff's Office, Fire and Rescue, the Thoughts Department, or identify what we need for those upgrades. And they actually, all, all for those departments, just some money, because they could apply it this year. So we have to put the money up front and, but we split it over two fiscal, as they allow us to split it over two fiscal, that's why you're seeing the 26,000 dollars for FY twenty-three. Some of that out of this year's budget, but the remainder of the upgrades that we purchased will come out of that to C I P. Any questions on that?
Questions? For my, just man, Robbin.
Yeah, those are years, those aren't issues, future years. And I think Mr. Grumway, Grumway, you might want to, Mr. Grum.
So for, for Robbin, we have 4 million in FY twenty-three, and we set out 6 million in FY twenty-five. Now, we came about, those numbers are based on, 2020, we looked at all the estimates that we have to be able to do accounting wise, based on the grants that we were applying for. So that's assuming that, so the $10 million figure, actually, total figure in, in 2020 was about 20 million. We've gotten more information since that, we know a little bit more about what the Robbin providers can provide, what they're looking for, what these grant applications are now made up of. Currently, we have three grant applications that are active, and we also have the opportunity now, actually, I think on Friday, we actually will have a, a call with Dominion, Rapid Haddock, and C V E C, to actually talk about utilizing a lot of the Dominion rights away to get to the end customer. So it, it used to be that you could utilize funding, not, not financial funding, you could utilize funding that was in-kind. And so they no longer look for in-kind contribution, they want actual investments by the counties into the projects. And so what this is, is really putting in the placeholder until you've heard an announcement from Luisa, for instance, they put 15 million dollars out there. Reality is, is what we've been able to find out is, they still have, both Dominion, C V E C, Firefly, Rapid Haddock, still have to go through a fine tuning process of engineering of how soon they can actually bring their products online, and then also finding project costs. So there could be some areas that don't qualify for grant funding. So we want to be in a position to be able to also be able to incentivize them building out to those areas that don't necessarily qualify for grant funding as well. So we're hoping not to have to spend any of this, but right now, we don't have enough information to be able to just leave it out of the C I P. We need to be able to be in a position to be able to move. If it's, turns out to be a lesser cost, we may actually be able to fund it with cash, but those are all being, future decision points. So that's kind of explained why we, we put that in there and carried out that sex claim a little bit further, further out. We find out, we need to bring it forward next year, after this year, with a little more study.
Thank you. Mr. Buzzer, you know, maybe just get back to me on this, you're talking off the top of your head, but basically, it just looks like you've taken 70,000 and just dragged it all across to the rest of time, if, if you look at, so that's PC refreshes, and then you have server refreshes of 25,000. But then, so I'm just wondering why not some kind of factor considering the price changes? But again, I don't know whether these things go up or down, but.
If, if anything, they go, what I've seen, they're going down a little bit, sometimes, it depends on the, the technology, laptops are going up a little, but PCs or desktops are going down a little, servers are going down a little. So I, I'm just looking at the fact of the time being, so we can adjust it if needed.
So, so in FY twenty-five, you've got Azure cloud servers, charging at 120,000 for Azure cloud servers. And that is, again, you drag and copy definitely into the future. It seems to me, or I'm, the question is, you must be moving something to Azure.
We have, we have, we've got some stuff on Azure now, not a lot, but that's the thought that at some point in the future, we want to start moving our stuff off, on, or this.
So, so, I, I would like to think that if we're moving to the tune of paying up 120,000 each year, that maybe the line above the server refreshes might, might die.
That is correct. Probably should have adjusted, but we're not positive yet. Maybe we'll move to the cloud, so only leave the 25,000 in server refreshes.
And, and are you thinking about, again, as your technology is changing, you're, you might just have virtual machines, which, if you host virtual machines, then your server, your PC refreshes should settle down, I would think, if you can run virtual machines on Azure.
If you go to virtual desktop, yes, at this point, I don't have plans to go to virtual desktop, but servers, for sure.
Virtual servers, so that's Azure cloud servers. And, and so those servers, you're not going to host Windows machine, virtual Windows machines?
Just servers, my desktops.
Okay.
Or end user machines.
All, all of our exchanges in the cloud right now, right? All right.
So, but can you, reiterating, this, this first line I, the chairman was talking about is for desktops and not laptops?
Oh.
Okay, something like that. And, you know, a strategy to move away from desktops based on the, or future of work in the virtual environments? Not virtual environment, but.
We're not.
We're not a telework environment. Yes. Yes, that, that is what we're doing now. We're, everyone who we can put on laptop, we are doing it as of when the pandemic started a year ago. But there are some people who still request desktops. I don't heard everybody go laptop, but there's some, some people have a business case that they still want a desktop. So we do allow the desktops too. But it's getting more and more laptops. It's probably 80% of the counties on laptops.
What, what kind of things are causing, it looks like we're doing 50,000 this year, this coming year, and 25,000 again, just copying all the way out for network equipment replacement upgrades, what, what kind of, what, what are you talking about here?
Oh, you remember what we talked about? I sent Barbara the information on that. Oh, I don't know who it was, it was for our, our network access control. It was one of the things that got identified when we did the penetration test a while back, you remember, I briefed you guys on that, back in two by twos, it's been over a year ago now. And one of the security risks that were identified was that we don't have any type of network access control, meaning when someone walks in off the street and finds an open jack in a conference room, if it's, if it's plugged into our network, maybe, you know, at least the internet, probably not our network, but it's still a risk. If we implement what's called network access control monitoring software, it'll prevent that. You have to weigh the ease of, ease of use of work versus security in some point, but I priced out the system, and that increase is mainly due to that. Is that what you're?
So that's a license fee?
Yes.
And that's for third-party monitoring? Or is, or is it just something that logs and alerts?
It's logged, it's, it's on cream, it's, it's the license and the, that you call.
Question for you. The, like, the keypad entry into the building and certain parts of the building, does that come under your budget?
Nobody will make any of those decisions.
I'm a test service. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, if you talk about the network security for just a minute, first question is, I didn't see, mentioned it was the cloud. We have off-site, we don't see any vulnerable information, so that disaster recovery, we have.
Yes, sir, we have, we do have, also, we don't see for all of our, what we identify as critical systems that are on our VMware environment. We, we have rotation between, we have in building and the fourth else, we have a third rotation up to the end. So it's something we're having, most sites here, we still have a copy of it up there. The only thing I will say that is not on the cloud right now, still take that up, is the O A S 100, it's triggered and we're missing that.
Okay, so if we gather that offsite backup systems, you could be powered up for disaster recovery. Is there any hardening that needs to be done for the access of even buildings for security purposes on how to access our systems? Anyway, just give us the thought, okay? That, that needs to be done, that stuff, we'll make sure we're hard. The other thing is, we talked about PC versus laptops versus, was the other one?
Actually, just to answer your question, actually, I believe we're going to have a closed session coming up, and we'll be able to comment about some of those issues that defer, please send that discussion for, for me, for a bit.
I understand that, thank you, appreciate it. Back to the PCs, laptops, this thing. I, you know, I'm not the expert, but what I've been seeing a lot of times, the breaches or data, you know, permitting data, it comes with employees leaving building, hitting laptop, getting thrown from laptop, next one on the car. Sometimes we stop at home, sometimes we just lift it out of our cars. And, and, and here's what I'm going with this is, you know, when I put a PC in your office, obviously it's a lot harder to provide, because it doesn't move, it stays, stays put. But I know what, we're shifting toward this model where sometimes you work remote, remote work or whatnot, so it needs to be. So I guess what I'm going with this is, and I know what the answer is, is you know, I'm not my team professional, but when you're offsite, you need remote access. But the concern is, the information and the access transferring back and forth between two locations typically would, you know, arise, you don't realize if somebody stuck in your office. So, so for a security standpoint, that transportation of information and access is issued, and also, you know, from the remote, you know, what do you need that is, only your department information or your, so that you're not, you know, downloading data or, you know, compromising the system or, that you're limited, it's, we have a dummy terminal, if you will, it's closer, spark terminal that has storage capacity to download, beander and around, through the rest of the system. So compartmentalizing, dummy type terminals, not transferring back and forth. I mean, I'm sure you've thought of all these things, because again, I'm not, not team professional, but what I've read, those are some of the weaknesses I've seen exposed elsewhere. And I'm sure we've thought about those things, but I'd like to just make sure that we're on top of all that, as a security standpoint, so we don't have those same problems. Sure, I'll be commenting on any of that.
Sure, so right now, if you're a user in a certain department on our network, you really have access to what you need. Same thing occurred when you come in, and you don't get any more access to what you have here. As far as a laptop gets stolen, we, we now encrypt all our laptops, and that was part of the penetration test and security risk assessment we had done, briefed you guys about, since, as a result of the, those report we got back, we started encrypting everything. The, the ton, the talk between you and our network is encrypted, we're VPNs on, one thing that we're working on right now is, as you know, we have a multi-factor authentication on our office portal, we're working on expanding that to both, but we have two VPNs, one's called Net Motion, and one's our sister VPN. We're working on expanding that to Net Motion right now, very close to getting that implemented. And after we're done with that motion, which covers the entire public S I T, Sheriff's Office, then we'll go expand that to the rest of the county, which is a sister VPN. So that they will have to have multi-factor authentication when they do login to our network.
Okay, so we have encryption, we have dual access, authorization. I, I guess we just encourage employees just to bring their laptop in the car, any home person, and then it stops.
But again, our credit, so if it does get stolen, then they, they can't hack into it while it's encrypted, unless they go, they use the passwords.
And then you're able to deactivate that, particularly the device?
We, we can deactivate the account, we can't remote wipe the device, if it's a laptop. We can remote wipe others, but not laptops. Now, no way, I, unless it had, some of the sheriff, I guess, they'll be aware of it. And the laptops, the license, I don't want to expose, they get this here, coming forward. Thank you for addressing that issue.
Any other questions on I P? Thank you. It's 3:30, we've been having an hour and a half, we will take a stretch break. All right, we'll come back in.
I will say that.
In 20 minutes still, or so, it's gonna be in nine minutes. All right, thank you, thank you, everybody. Mr. Buzzer can pay attention to make sure the volume is good, but as far as, for the most part, you're getting, you're picking up the volume all right?
Yeah, I, I, I said, I don't, I just, the screen, but it looks like, I always complain about.
Good, good, okay. And just to let folks know, the, the slides and, and the video will be available on our website, right? Slides, slides will be posted after the meeting, and the video will also be available. And I'll just, board members, just make sure, and speakers, that we speak up so that, kind of get the best quality audio on the tape. All right, we are moving now, while Barbara can take it back over to the sheriff's department.
Yes, that's correct. And in the first five years, there's only one item that appears on sheriff's, um, CIP, and that is for vehicle replacement. And the sheriff can address that.
Good afternoon. Our yards is pretty simple with the G F Y coming to, one of the place vehicles, same as we used one of the places last year. The vehicles that we packed on the place this year, one, we just actually got an email about it. It's two thousand and three, surveillance thing, so it's pretty old. It's in the shop right now. I have it, it's probably about twenty five hundred dollars worth done to it. You had that for, I would say, quite some time, and it is in desperate need of repair. We also have a two thousand and thirteen C N I vehicle that needs to be, it's our spare vehicle, that's in the shop also right now, getting repaired. That thing probably needed to go last year, but we were able to, you know, pick up a few miles and hopefully replace that this year. We also have an evidence stand that we need to replace as well, and then the other vehicles are all controlled. This includes patrol vehicles, everything in it, and then where from, the lights, graphics, the rifle locks that go in back of the car, the new changes. We also added a couple of the push guards for the, see, we have, we do have a deer taught at the budget reservation of them. So we're adding two of those to these cars. That's basically it, replacing cars. And if you have any questions?
And also got that this is not for new vehicles or, well, not for new deputy position vehicles, those are in the operating.
That was my question, David.
I can't believe you're getting rid of the Stewie Do fan.
Just kind of go.
Well, it's the machine, it's the mystery, I had to look it up. It's the mystery machine. Uh, I, I always thought it was Stewie Do, but I'm looking at the mystery machine a lot, and it's, I've seen it in Houston, down at the courthouse area. Wait, you get some money for that? Any questions? Yes?
Okay, we have accounting negotiated repair rate for all county departments. With any, with any firm?
So, yeah, the quick answer to that is no. The longer answer is the sheriff works maybe maybe one bed or. Uh, and I'm not quite sure whether that's just if you have a deal there, or if you just, you know, if that's worked out to convenience for, for you.
A lot of it depends on what it is. It's all warranty work, it's a support, it's a support vehicle. Then for just general oil change, things like that, take it to parish board, manage all that. Get ready to add new auto in West Penn, to kind of make it convenient for some deputies to live throughout different places in the county, so they can go over there. But we sort of, we keep the main thing to do repairs at the beach. Sometimes we have to send it over to heat, because if you do get it, if it's over here, they might not, there'll be problems, and they have to send it over there to get them.
You got how many vehicles?
I'd have to, I'd have to look at the data.
And the county does have a number. It seems like we should be able to get some kind of a negotiated repair rates, I think eighty five bucks an hour. You do all the damage, you could do sixty bucks an hour, and some.
I know I did ask about that at one point, and in our vicinity, the vendors, if we try to send them all to one vendor, it could be dealt because of the, the quantity of work that we get done. So I think that's something we can look into though, and I can talk to the purchasing person about.
Maybe you get the same rate with several vendors.
Right, right.
Because it's more quality, it's, it gets.
And the other thing, the maintenance facility?
Yeah.
Yes, school wasn't announced this way.
Hey, by the school. Question, yes, I just, to get a look at, for that certification, I might ask. Before twenty nine, this is a, at the beginning, there's a presentation that replaces a couple of special, a lot of those matches, control vehicles. Are those, any of those as well?
They are.
Usually one hundred and forty, so those special vehicles, you wouldn't buy a, you don't say I would either, right?
Correct.
So I see this one twenty five every year. My, my follow up would be replacing a similar number of patrol vehicles every year that I did that, uh, city, city, your car. But you have those special vehicles upfront. How does that work in this back, where you have no funding for it? Sheriff, that is, are doing their job or something like that.
I get it, I get it. Right, each, each vehicle does have a little bit of a different cost, and we'll put in there, the C N I is basically paying that control, maybe a little bit more expensive for the C N I page. For that, then you get the, as in the surveillance vehicle. It's, uh, we are sort of wondering what, what exactly whether we want to man when it's on the truck.
Sure.
Uh, something like that, kind of, pretty bad times, we're really hoping, yeah. But it also has a lot of the equipment and everything in it, that'll be, it's not, it's not having water, and stuff like that, it's not having lights, hidden antennas, and things like that. It's a process very simple, bigger than a trophy.
Like, so we, we're placing the same number of patrol vehicles each year in this projection.
Yes.
And then, again, it's a separate cost, but are they in lieu of patrol vehicles on the first year?
Correct, the rest of the trophies.
Okay, so even though you're doing those in lieu of the killing on first day, you still have a level funding to keep on this, regardless of.
Yes.
All right, and I didn't know, how do you know, know what's the two D, what you have to do? Okay, and I think you already put the, the new vehicles, the boots on the ground, they're going to be in the upper.
Correct.
Good, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff. Now for schools.
So we went over all the individual projects that really addressed all this that are earlier CIP work out. I am keeping them here to, um, refresh everybody on the school CIP request, and also to make that, there is one change from the request that I identified here, and that is that, the Houston High School additions renovations was pushed out, um, one year, so it's spread over three years, starting twenty four, twenty five, twenty six, as opposed to, the request was twenty three, twenty four, twenty five. And that's done, um, of course, on affordability and trying to smooth out the expenses a bit. I will also say that within the ten year request, um, some items had to be pushed out into further years as well. Again, um, looking at the big picture and, and that is how we can afford everything, which we brought that at a minute. The, the construction of the new bird element at the school was originally in the second five years, and that, that's been pushed out, into the third five years. And of course, there's a lot of people from the school, a lot of representatives, not really any white teachers, so if anybody has any questions that they may thought of last, last question, then we can discuss those.
Or, yes?
Can you remind me what we have in the school, everybody? And, yeah, I love ice.
I'm sorry, Mr. Spina, do you mind repeating that, please?
Um, just reminded of the four million, about our middle school upgrades.
Yes, that's a great question. So we have flat twenty two hundred, we have four million dollars, includes additions, uh, that includes a new parking lot of the secondary complex, as well as improvements to Bulldog Way to prepare for future use from elementary school, including prime lanes on the current facility, as well as route six and five twenty two. Road improvements, yes, sir. Road improvements and parking lot.
So the road improvements, do they fall under certification? Or do, do they go to?
I was just wondering, from a policy perspective, we see lots of things that go in. Is this, could Bulldog Way be in consideration?
If it's part of the project, then the projects will pay for it, but it's not saying that, that could be an option. I'd like to hear that. I'd like to talk about that, for the audience.
And that is, that's all we do, is the roads, and there's no building improvements in that four million, three?
Including the, they say parking lot, which is a pretty hefty price, that approximately a million dollars, I believe, and then the rest are prime lanes and roads.
No, that's all surface road stuff, not serious, okay?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
And although it listed as two projects, I, I discussed this with Dr. Randy a little bit, but we, it's two projects, but, but they're to be done in conjunction, I guess, if you do my way of life.
Correct, yes, this is, the road improvements will be done in conjunction with the construction.
Of the new element.
I imagine on the bird elementary, through the power years, but we have seventy five thousand, it's like just a maintenance figure. To, to, where she pushed, it says, you know, abandoned F flat third, but with the pushing out of the new facility out into the third five years, I guess. Is that a realistic number, that seventy five thousand? I guess it's just kind of in there, but we obviously have some expenses, if you're occurring anticipated expenses in it. And, I mean, that might be a legitimate concern, if we're giving out here, that number would be so high, that the decision to push, it's a decision that will be made in future years, but, it is, those years seem to slip up on us so quickly enough. I guess that's something we'll continue to monitor is, is the cost of the school, right? But what kind of things do you, capacity is going to be a threat, at least capacity for the foreseeable future is going to be adjusted to the elementary school and center, right?
That's correct. And so the seventy five thousand dollars for the maintenance schools, it'd be things like tanking, tile upgrades, uh, you know, it's indoors, just ongoing. Much like the county has a, a maintenance board, the county capital pool, and facilities, and stuff like that, keep breaking out my school, it all is a part of the ongoing needs of, not only bird, but other schools. He has to be approximately seventy five thousand dollars here.
I see, I see. Can you do that, same, a few years out, you can pick that same thing up at the new, the new school as well?
Correct.
And Randall? Randall, he obviously got some bigger projects that don't have there.
Randall, just in the beginning, it's been, it's been for a few years out, uh, at flat twenty seven, and that's modernization, some cosmetic improvements, and right about end recognizing, that school's going to be delayed for many years. It's an investment to be able to keep that school in good shape for the future.
I should, can you say again, and Randall, he's got twenty six, he's got a main at five, and a main eight twenty seven. Have Randall?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Chalk, and that, that's funding for, um, just modernization of that facility, windows and flooring. Trying to get it to ultimately new construction, recognizing age of that facility, it's a significant investment, just upgrading the facility to get it to the, the next phase.
Thirty three, if you over seventy years.
It would go in the sixties, definitely.
So, Doctor, where can you be at B again, and I've talked about this probably numerous times, uh, where we are approximately at this point in role? Twenty two, five, and six, two, twelve, what we have today, and then I know you've done studies, you look at it, and say, five years to that, or something like that, and maybe later too.
I'll give you approximate number in this last clip, but approximately, bird, we have roughly three hundred students. And these are preschool through fifth grade numbers, so approximately.
That's just bird?
Just bird, about three million students. At Houston Elementary School, we have approximately three hundred and thirty students, including the.
Sixty.
And then at Randall, we're about four hundred and seventy five students, preschool through five, and.
So that's, you know, the middle is five, okay, and then how about the current sixty?
Middle school in grades six through eight were about six hundred and thirty to forty students. And eight hundred and forty or fifty at the high school, grade nineteen, twelve.
So that's nine eighty, okay. Now, is that included today? I know you have, your county students, well, they're literally in the classroom, they're dealing with work, so that, right?
That's correct.
These are your students?
These are our students, our membership, isn't it?
Okay, and, and we have talked, it's not all about big time, it's back end and all that. So now, have you looked at projections, like five group projections?
We do have that data. Every year, we update our predictions. We just start a recent conversation with the global Cooper Institute, and make sure that our, our thoughts are pretty much aligned. And, uh, but what we were told is the same thing that our consultants, well, this is really hard to project enrollment groups right now. I didn't like that answer, uh, but, you know, there's so many variables right now, what is happening, you know, being live or pretty associated with the pandemic, and we want to experience a boom after what we've been through. And it's really hard to predict that future. What we have is data prior to the pandemic, based on our consultants. We have high projections, recommended projections, and low projections. We have all of that. It has been used through more budget discussions, and ultimately, uh, with the school board has asked of supervisors for consideration.
So the new, uh, Houston Elementary School, at least at this point, is, uh, being planned for this six hundred?
Six fifty.
Six fifty, okay.
Yes.
Six fifty, okay, so that is more than the current enrollment of the elementary, of course, it's going to grow over time, which is not going to be able to, huh? So you'd be pulling, when you talk about this, we just obtained the school districts to bring some students from both ends of the county.
Yes, ma'am.
Be generally right, okay?
So we have our largest elementary school here in the center part of the county, redistricted, and then get someone some more useful life out of the bird and Randall, through redistricting and redistribution of our student population.
Uh, moving some students, uh, and we had talked about this with a few people, I mentioned this. Okay, so, um, there is a cost to not building the new school, which you have to rent and rent and charge, right? And that's the same, who, any, probably build or any of that, so where, uh, you have money in the budget or a new faculty, for upgrades and maintenance until we start building the school, under thirty two according to this.
Correct.
Well, actually, planning, probably building thirty four. And that, that makes total sense. Randolph is quite far, I mean, ten times the number, quite much more. My question is, I'm not questioning whether that numbers connect under current situation, under current situation. My question is this, if you willing to pass the students from Randolph to the new elementary school, do you really need to spend that much money there, what you said? That, I mean, that's, that's the question. Why wouldn't you be continuing to do that? I guess because the school's not competitive for people.
Yes, that is, yes, ma'am, that's exactly right. So it's, what, what's written here, you know, the new Randolph Elementary School would be pretty far out, which is. It's just over ten years away. And so uh, we would want to make sure that students at Randolph would have the same same classroom experiences, furniture and and cosmetic appeals to the students with in the new elementary school. It's, it's really looking at the experience from that place standpoint. Students at Randolph or at Goosewood Elementary School still have, you know, a nice looking space that's built for what we expect academically. So if that money spent in twenty six, twenty seven is really interim measure, it gets more useful life outlets based ultimately, but.
That's interesting.
And and you know, that's a figure that we can certainly, as we get closer to those out here, to make sure that those figures are accurate and true and see if we can dial in on that figure.
Right. Anything, have anything beyond the year, we would, a lot of better days.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Saying this, it looks, it's nice to see it. I can come together, it's going to be exciting. It's going to be beautiful reward. So the first part of the elementary school is I know my question was that the F Y twenty four, the one point four million for the high school additions and renovations. Is that, is that a design? Is that mostly designed?
Yes, sir. That is mostly designed for the projects that we've come in twenty five and twenty six.
Do we end up thinking of a project management, uh, expense into all these as well?
These figures, Mr. Long, did not include that project management. I know that's something we discussed. These figures are what has been sent from the board and have not changed since. And when the school board approved these figures, they did not include the project.
But preference would be to not manage the project itself, or?
That's correct. You know, a preference would be to hire a third party to work on the head.
Well, they're spending this kind of money for eighty page building. That's probably what I'd do.
We'll make sure this is, is done off our, our community. It's the building of the existence for many, many, many years.
At least. At least.
Fifteen, nineteen million for the high school, seven, we're doing that, like we've looked at for years, we're doing that large ring in the middle of the high school.
Yes, the eighteen million dollars, Mr. Long, includes uh, thirty thousand square for the addition to the high school or A C T E and STEM Center. It includes an auxiliary gymnasium as well as a restroom room. And includes interior renovations to the secondary complex, modernized space, carrying out off crews and spaces differently. Supporting some of the violence programs and renovations as well. Class one forty three is the dollar amount based listed in F Y twenty six.
I don't know, sorry, you probably told seven or four, but I'm just trying to keep it, keep it straight. And that's, that's kind of really, that's something to look forward to.
Yes, sir.
It's complex number one twenty, one point three.
One forty three.
One forty.
The one forty.
That, that's going to be a nice, that's, we talked about that for years. That's going to really be a very useful build, very useful space. All right. Uh, any uh any lessons learned or feedback on this, that's relevant, so that we, that is, you know, I just do all already here for years ago, it's always been a solid thing. Uh, any design implications, uh, you know, possibly required for that all costs? The type of tech, cost, the design, and so, you know, a lot of it. If you're, if you're doing it here, if it's on there, it's just we get through this, so we can get that, for all the feedback here.
Yeah, that, that cost included reflects an updated square footage cost based on what we expect schools to look like post pandemic. It can include upgraded H V A C systems, increased filtration and not only the ductwork, but common areas as well as classroom design, which was maybe a little bit larger potentially than current design. But we are in a situation where we need to go to a six foot distancing situation. Again, it gives us additional capacity. We have actual classroom being larger, so it incorporates that. And also looks at more outdoor spaces where you potentially got easier access to get outdoors and do some learning activities. You know, potentially that may involve rolled outdoors where you can walk or get outside, you can have a patio there potentially. So I think the design of this new school will be reflective of allowing us to operate in any sort of COVID or flu, or who knows what health emergency we may impact. Things wise, us to think about that happening. Schools will be in existence for seventy years. There may be another situation in the next seventy years. Work that step as we can. We've done our best to upgrade off the model basis of this factors.
Okay, great. So maybe a little bit of that sound about that, like for the design, maybe. But at this point here, if the costs that you're showing here, which is great. They say our classroom should be ten percent larger, but if they have those costs, so we'll do something to be respectful.
Yes, sir. We've done our best to accommodate for this increase in square footage. And it is a larger structure and it is an increased cost per square foot as a result of that larger structure. So the cost will inevitably not be.
Um, last name, and this, Jerry, this may not be in here already, but um the abandonment of the three existing elementary schools. I think there's some consideration of possibly repurposing the one or two that were downstairs. It's a good idea to do this, you know, it's a re-purposing. The other two may be all wrong and they be random because you can't hear them. The maybe demolition costs or the tearing costs. Are there those spots in the university?
No, sir. Yes, sir. Possible repurposing or demolition or abandonment is included in any of those out here figures.
That's all us.
That is, yeah.
If we get back, we get to building problems. Yeah, if you simply magically get a cost, it would be less fun for us to be able to transfer to the school.
That's right.
You push on the balloon on one side, it comes out the other side. Uh, but my point with all this is just this is, you know, we're going to have some costs. We could put it in here as demolition, it's actually repurposing. It's still going to be a loss in there. And we'll say if there's no cost, if this magic disappears, we probably will have something to be able to do. We're talking about years now. This is the first five years.
Very sticky.
Yeah.
Look at what we're saying.
Yeah. Uh, that's, I mean, that's really busted here now. So uh.
Mr. Pierce, Mr. Pierce, we'll, in future years, we'll account for that and we'll place a budget figure in there as a placeholder for demolition, transfer. We need to be accountable for, but we'll figure, but it's something in that conversation.
We're going to do this year somewhere out. Something that can really be a cost.
True. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, sure. That, that, you know, what you said, that, that, there was a, no, it's not. Overlook it. You got that, Mark?
I, if I was going to put it as a placeholder where our students value themselves probably and uh land as well, I mean, there isn't, you could get it off that. It's, it, it turns over a few and you just, you have to do what you want with it.
Like the expense. That's what we get expense.
If you, like, uh, they may make some sudden value or cost that, I mean, it's all the wrong idea, I think. Uh, if you plus, no, no, there's a, have the back from the fire, it's a loss, I think.
I'd also prefer you look at the public facility master plan for the next twenty five years, see what other adaptive reviews might be uh, able to be held at all of the locations. That way we can, we'll have a plan on that.
It helps out. And like, two areas of, some of your most old things, old damage, I'm very happy to be good with it, so.
You're talking about parks and back then, you didn't see those, right? That's what, that's what he had to tell me.
Well, that's like.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah.
For this.
Well, I also actually look at, we have, you know, workforce, how workforce has been worked in the future. I mean, what if fifty percent are unemployable, you might be on these stuffs. I mean, I accept that it's probably been done, but I mean, there's still be a lot of people that may not even be funded in the day. So.
Yeah. So to your point, we might be purposes. So we're putting a, putting under of X hundred thousand, then demolition, we decided to, it was, it's still, you know, to so then it's not looking to you yet.
Correct.
But we're saying possibly maybe, we should just put, next year when we're doing this, we should realize it is going to be a cost for each of us to, and it won't be in season.
So, okay. Consider that.
Thank you, Dr. Riss.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. To the estimate for um, bird and Randall, they include anticipated land acquisition costs?
Land acquisition is listed as a separate, separate entry item. And you can see the land acquisition for bird is proposed on this document, F Y thirty two. Uh, with construction a few years later, and Randolph, I believe we have accounted for land acquisition in the past. That is in uh, F Y thirty five.
So four point seven million for land and forty eight million for the school.
Yes, of course, that's, you know, it's inflated, uh, these are factors, but we have accounted for land acquisition, yes, sir.
Okay. I just, you know, I just kind of look at, I spending over five million dollars at Randall to get ten or twelve years to spend fifty two million on tool. I feel a lot of people are going to question, but wisdom in putting that much money into a school, basically. Randy, fifty years ago.
Things happen in the future, if the horizon for the new R E S is not as far out, other factors change. Not only have that interim measure, uh, it is a planning document. Certainly, we come back to this table each year. Make adjustments as needed.
We'd recognize the construction price. My question.
All right. All the projects have been presented and now talk a little bit about how we're doing. Um, and some things, but to recognize from my earlier presentation on that. So this is, sorry, because I think that was sort of, um, you see, it we're in a very ideal position, we don't have a lot of debt and it is declining over the next, so, years. And talk about all these last, that's the last presentation. Um, the only thing I want to add to this is um, that we, we discussed that there are options. And that can be the timing of the debt issuance, the structure, the service payment. Um, and we'll talk a little bit about more of the, more about those options in a minute. So the, the projects that we have slated those before debt funding would be the um elementary school and the infrastructure that we discussed. And um, we would plan on borrowing forty one million dollars in twenty twenty two for those. And then the other three projects, the circuit court building, the virtual nice renovation, the addition, and a less required station. Um, planning on fifty four million in twenty twenty six. So um, you can see that we usually present a balance by year C I P. The first year is adopted, as we said, um, we use proppers where we anticipate that we will have them or we have, already have them. As um, in F Y twenty two, we already have seven hundred and eighty, five hundred of it is to um or three fifty is it, is to um, the library and then the remainder to the elementary. Um, we also have some operating funds to match the um, operating expenses, the building, hardware placement, and like that. Um, the debt, I mentioned the grant donation that applies to the um, I T project, the nine, the next generation nine one one. And then reserve, we always plan on using reserves and, and that's some cash for our C I P. The first two years, we call reserves, the year after that, we call contingent on previous year savings. We've been very fortunate and we've been able to do that. To invest that much cash each year, but, but once you get to the out years, we, we move it to contingent on what, what we saved in the previous year because we just can't be sure we'll continue to have those um, surpluses. Then these are just graphs of what um, possible, the possible scenario we show in terms of compliance with the policy well within the, the policy. And you saw this last week and week two, the existing plus the new um, debt service, it does show a little bit of a peak. And that is when we came on the new debt for the future elementary. So ideally, like you said, we kind of like that to smooth out and there are various options for ways you could do it. And that's what I want to discuss a little more today. So some of the um, options that you have are the timing of the debt issuance, when you, when you issue the debt. The structure of the debt service payment. So you may need to the first year, a couple of years, you'll have a interest. Um, and then start paying the install. How much cash you can do with the project. Obviously that'll lower the debt. And um, the type of debt. There's various um, vehicles, the general obligation would be the result of going for a referendum. You can use general obligation that you still have other avenues of debt if we decide we want to do so. Um, and then something called reimbursement resolution. Um, and let me just um, go through this scenario and then I'll come back and explain reimbursement resolution. So um, we have the option of, of going to referendum fall in November and then issuing debt at the beginning of uh, next year. Which will still be at Y twenty two and that, that leads to that, that little bit of that peak that we just described. Here's another option, you could um, wait until the summer or the fall of twenty twenty two, when now you'd be in F Y twenty three. And when you do that, then you, you smooth that debt service out a little bit, get rid of that little peak. But how do you do that and then also start a project like if you know elementary? So um in, in order to, to perhaps go with something like not issuing the debt until F Y twenty three. You could, uh, depending on your goal of, of this year that we're in, we could at the end of the year substitute three million dollars in cash from um potential saving and, and lower the debt and then have some startup cash. The school has about a million and a half right now that we've already allocated to them and um, that they haven't used. They used a little bit of funds for different site analysis, but that would give a startup cash. Um, and it would move out our debt service. And there's also something called reimbursement resolution, which the um the I R S allowed you to um, to pass a reimbursement resolution. And this gives you about two years where you can start spending money. And then once you issue the debt, you can say, hey, I'm reimbursing myself from that debt. Um, and the reason they are allowing you to do this, because they know that people that governments want to plan when they issue the debt because they don't want all that cash if they don't necessarily need it right away, because obviously you start paying interest right away. So um, you could pass a reimbursement resolution which allows you to start spending. So you have cash balances in this county that are fairly healthy. And um, that would um, and then just reimburse yourself when you issue the debt. The other side that I pointed is the interest rates are really low right now, we're in a good interest rate environment and um, it's, it's anticipated that generally as the economy heats up and gets better, the interest rates will also slowly increase as well. So um, basically just pointing out that we have lots of options with the debt. We can um we can pick our timing, we can pick our structure for the most part. Um, and, and then it becomes, you know, you want to issue sooner, take advantage of the um. And, and then it becomes, you know, you want to issue sooner, take advantage of the interest, lower interest rate, and make, make the debt service work out, or if you want to wait a little and smooth out that debt service. And then, and then of course, last week we talked about the optimum amount of debt service. I think would be about $6 million, which equates to about $100 million in debt. And, and we will have further discussions about how you decide on the debt amounts and things like that. Wanted to know if you wanted to discuss, or have some questions about debt, the debt issuance. And those kinds of things, so.
Yeah, I just, if you would, go to 43 again. So this is existing plus new. So this, oh, this is where we're pushing it out all there.
Yes, but just putting out the first issuance of 20.
But, but that's significantly going over the 6 million.
Here, here it does, yes. And then, and that's not until you issue that second portion. And then again, you have the same timing, you have the same options of that. So I think at this point in our planning, I, I, I think we would only recommend issuing the debt for the school, the school Fuchelmeister Elementary project. Then the other three later, and again, if you push that out of your, if you restructure that, that's mainly normally, yes, that, that doesn't do anything to this.
No, I think that's always significantly over the debt service capacity.
Right. And, but that happens in 2027, and again, a lot of options out there.
Right. But also, so these are all working on 20-year loans?
Correct.
So if we were to borrow $100 million, I think we love saying those words, that makes us a saddle 6 million debt service at today's environment. Not to say what's going to happen if we have the economy, or whatever. And that means for 20 years, we can't borrow any more money unless everything, it totally improves.
Right. And you said, unless you all of a sudden have another
Magic here.
Source of, of rather, right. Right. Does tie your hands and not just.
This totally ties our heads. You do nothing else for 20 years.
Other than those orbit plans, correct.
Thank you.
Yeah. Couple thoughts on that. In the last debt restructuring, and actually the last two debt restructuring we did, we kind of backward engineered. We started out with what we wanted the debt service payments to be, that level A, smoothed out the peaks. You set that at the five and a half. You know, what you've got to do is a full, full three years worth there. And the way, there's a couple of ways to do that. One is you could have the principal repayments step out as the green is stepping down. So it's kind of like an offset, so it's level off five and a half. That would give you a little, five and a half to six, six and a half, just doing that. That's one way to do it would be to structure the repayment schedules at the level A at the five and a half dollars. The other way to do it is to go 25 days. If it's a 50-year school or a 70-year school, 20 to 25.
Yes. And, and you can do that, you know, you, and I don't need to tell you this. You, you, you know, you pay for everything you get. So if you go out 25 days, you go, you pay slightly higher interest rates.
A little higher interest rate, but they do bring the five and a half down to five, spread it out over five or a year, five and a half.
Oh, actually making it 25 days makes a huge difference. And spread it for the balance, you said.
So something concerned is, you know, and I have this concern too, is we don't, we don't want to kind of take the shock into a random system and have no, no wiggle room. So I, I agree that that should be one of our goals, is to preserve, you know, capacity. Now, the six loan breaks us up to about eight or nine percent, eight and a half percent, nine percent of budget. Our target's 10. So there's still some wiggle room at the six million. And even the 10, that's our informal target, well, is our policy to be around 10 and back down under 10. Something that's a little more wiggle room, yes. I mean, but I agree 100% that we always want to have plenty of wiggle room. And that's in addition to the cash reserve and all that stuff, just as far as the debt service payments go. And then the last piece, so you could get rid of the peaks with, with some, maybe you can lower the whole payment by every five years to the term. And then this is, this is a 20-year look. And if the assessed value over 20 years grows at three or four percent a year, 20 years, your six percent of capacity, or $6 million capacity is going to be like, you know, 10 or 12.
Right. That's what you're going, right.
We grow into more capacity over time as well. So, but I agree 1000% that we do not want to use all of our available ability for 20 years. That's just informal.
Yes, that's right.
So, so there are some things you can do, and I think that should be one of our goals, is to maintain flexibility on dollars. You know, we, we can absorb some shocks if they come up later on, we need to do something else.
Right. And other options are that you, I mean, you wouldn't have to issue the debt all at once. You could, depending on the vehicle you use, you know, if you wanted to do a GEO of 40 million at the beginning and then maybe just two years later, you wanted to do 10 million, you could do it through like an EDA type loan, you know, like the conduit debt loan. A lot of people borrow money through their EDA. It's like a lease revenue bond and, and you pay very little bit more for that type of debt, you know. So you, or you could go through a pooled debt, or you could even do standalone through one of the DPSA or BRA. But if you wanted to break it to smaller talks, you know, if you wanted to do a large.
Do you got the new buildings? You could do that, new building, building warehouses and stuff. You can get those kind of loans.
Yes, yes.
Well, since we have top credit, we can access capital markets directly and not go indirectly through the state government because they do charge a premium of way from 1% to use their services.
They do, but I, the interest rate, the disparity is not, not that great right now. And I checked on that. Like to do the EDA type debt, that was really only about five basis points more than, than ours than, than going through GEO. So, and to go through like DPSA, standalone would be about 20 basis points. So, so there is, but you're right, there is an advantage to.
The administration, the, of a two-stage process, we could save all that and go direct down to the rating. How did you have the four of us who weren't rated, but now they are in the access.
Right. And we will know the cost of issues too.
Of course we will. And we won't have the additional cost of issues.
Right.
Which we are taking in our existing loans, privileged using their services. The other thing is, if we had to talk more about the structure later with PFM, but you could do a, call it indenture of, you know, $100 million, issuing 40 million under the indenture. Then what they call a reopen, you could reopen that indenture, issue another 40 million later. Reason you might want to do something like that, how they do it piecemeal, smaller chunks, different directions, is the thing that they call it often is more limited to the marketplace, more people you attract to buy your lot. Because it's only for small issues, a lot of folks want to touch it. But if it's a larger, more liquid issue, then a lot of people will get the lot. So i- i- if you did, you know, if you bought indentures and reopenings and did it in large chunks of the total, total amount was large enough to give the attention of a lot more people, you'd have a deeper market to start. So those are all things we have to think about doing this. Structuring is part of this process. But a part of all this is there's ways to give impact, but if you need to start with what we want in terms of a payment that we feel comfortable with, and then build a structure around that that we feel comfortable with. And then keep flexibility in the system and try to issue at a lower cost. I do agree that there's a window here for the next 12, 18 months of low, low-cost financing. Where the period of negative interest rates, that where the inflation rates above our rate, so you've got a negative real rate. So this is a good time to issue. And if you're going to issue 25-year loans, if you issued, you know, this year rather than halving these interest rates and then half three years from now, much higher rate, then you got 25-year bonds at that much higher rate. So you might want to bundle, you know, one or two years where rather than doing piecemeal as the rate curve starts to steepen over time as the economy recovers. So those are all things we, having the size, structure.
And aside, because with the premium, you may not have to issue, you know, 95 million dollars of debt. You may be able to issue 85 and then you'll have your, with premium, you have 95 in cash anyway, so.
Right, 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 right. So there is a premium. When you issue, you can collect additional cash on that, but not all the way. But, but the other thing is, so we want to keep flexibility. We don't want to be up against the wall.
No.
And we're only doing basically half the chunk earlier, and then the other half, few years down the middle, we have a lot of information about how the assessed value is playing, how the policy is doing, how big the debt is going, how this debt service grabs most. So if we do that sort of issue, it's, I think it's structural fact that could be much more important than it is now with that type of money.
Right.
So really just looking at half and then analyze the other half down the road.
Truthfully, it's not ready to be at the end of those, those other projects either. So you wouldn't want to borrow money now, which is.
No, you couldn't manage all those projects at once. You program three or four major projects at once pretty bad. So I think the way this is set up is sequential, so that you've got Randolph or the Fuchelmeister Elementary. And as soon as that project's finished, three or four years from now, you start with the, you know, central high school project that goes on for two or three years and then start, you know, Bird, that goes on for a couple of years. So you're, you're kind of sequencing your major projects, which is not following them all at once. Because our capacity matters, so the projects would be special. Be kind of similar cases, well.
Can I ask some questions? I know that you're trying. I'm looking, I have a few things, I'm listening to this and I'm, and I'm seeing, what I'm hearing is, from your slides, like, options, countless options. And of course, that gets a little hard then to think, think, you know, if we're thinking decisions, options doesn't fit, you know, like, what's a decision? So I'm looking for, what, are there any certainties in all of this? And the one question I have is, is there a certainty that we're going to go to the citizens in our community this November with a question? Is that, is that definitive or is that still? And it's not. That has yet to be decided, right? But, I mean.
That's pretty much at a decision point, which we won't get into in a lot of detail today. But, but that if we are to move on a, on a referendum in November, then you need, there are certain steps you need to take. And we're into the critical path on some of those. So we, we are preparing some things and we will talk to you some more about that, but we are on the critical path. And so, yes, you don't have to decide that today, but you all as a group will have to decide that in the next month. So if you want to go to referendum.
And, and so of all the options to finance, if we don't, if we decide, I mean, the decision to, to referendum, yes or no, isn't that going to drive some of the options available to us among the?
It'll drive the type of debt that you can issue. So it won't mean you can't, if you decide not to go to referendum, it won't mean you can't issue that. It's just, you won't be able to issue a general obligation debt. Then you would have to go through the EDA or the BRA or the DPSA to issue that.
And so you, you, one of your options you put up there showed that there's timing, timing is key. To your point, we can't, we can't manage all these projects at once, yeah. So, so real practical reasons that we have to approach this, several practical reasons we approach this. The financial practical reason, when you talk about like, what do you call it, an indenture bond, like 100 million bond, and we can just take chunks out of it along the ways we do that?
Yeah, I know.
I'm just asking, what, what do you describe? Because one of the things you talked about was, I wish I could, I think your slides are in here, right? The reimbursement resolution, well, not, not supposed to be reimbursement resolution, but cash, cash upfront, debt a little bit later, which the reimbursement resolution could be a component of that.
Right.
That, God, I had a concern about that, or just wanted to make sure it isn't a concern. We're talking about not locking, starting a project and not locking an interest rate? Or not locking finance to a term by doing it that way? Or are we starting a project with cash, but we know when we start the project, what our financial structuring debt is going to be? Is that, am I making myself clear? Because what, what scared me about this is if we postpone, taking, putting the, putting the goal on the debt and knowing what the terms are, and we start a project and the economy changes, suddenly we're like, well, you're in. Because once you start construction, you're in. So it seems to me, once we start a project, we all know what the financing terms are, right?
I agree. And I'm seeing things from you too, that if you found out that two or three years from now, when you planned on accessing the capital markets, that you couldn't raise the cash, would you have mentioned the treasury to start the funding?
Exactly.
So starting a project, in my mind, is potentially successfully issuing the box to raise the cash to fund a project. So I, yeah, I would.
So when you, so when you successfully issue your lock-in, but there's obviously terms and when you have to start taking them into account and start paying interest for that.
When you issue bonds, you issue, notice the cash comes in when you issue bonds. You can do, you know, bank line credits, just if you can draw that, pieces as you go. But when you issue bond, you issue debt, you're issuing in exchange for cash. So, you know, it's.
So, so how, how would you say to structure, let's start now and plan on borrowing in two years? How can, how can you say to structure that?
You want to lock in today's interest rate, but not borrow.
What's, what's the point otherwise? Because if we have to borrow, sort of lock in, then we're going to have the cash. What, what's the benefit of spending our cash in that, in that scenario?
We spend the cash first and then issue debt later. We already should kind of talk that some dispatch a little bit. I mean, part of this is if I told you, you could borrow money at a very favorable rate to debt, which you wouldn't get it for two years, and you put it in cash account in the pool that we have our reserves in, and then two years later, you draw it down and spend it versus wait two years, pay a much higher interest rate for the next 20 years. You know, and that's the kind of analysis you have to go through is, you know, you can borrow basically escrow and pre-fund the school and pay a bigger mortgage charge for two years versus paying some cash to two part of the school. But then for the next 20 years of the school, they'll be paying a low interest rate to his interest versus the waiting to get it, take it to a higher level for 20 years. You know, so that's a timing issue that, I hear. As far as timing goes to start that, this CIP in 2022, which is what we adopted, we're going to be considering at our dating, and 2022 has 37 million for the school. That's a chunk that can't be absorbed through operations, it can't be absorbed by anything or reserves, it can't be absorbed by anything other than borrowing on a specific law. So if we're going to go down this path, then we need to fund it. And the question of funding is, do we issue debt to fund this, or do we look at other ways to fund it? And if we do it indirectly, this means increased cost. If we do it directly as a GEO, we have the credit rating, we can go straight out of the marketplace and borrow that money. And if you, and then 20, a little bit of 23, that 41 could become 45. We can do 45 or 50, but this is combined with others, that's kind of a number, a lot of interest in all that. But, but if we don't put a referendum on the revenue, then if we can't borrow, then I don't know how we fund the 37 million. So to your point, there's a lot of options, a lot of certainties, let's start taking them down. If we want to build the school next year and spend 37 million, then we've got to figure out how to fund it. And the way to figure out funded is decide, do we want to put a referendum? Because we can't, we can't borrow general obligation bonds without, with a referendum. So if you're backing this up, yes, build the school, yes, 37 million, yes, we need to fund it, we need to borrow bonds. And yes, the general obligation bonds, then yes, we need a referendum. And you can do that in the fall for going to access the window of interest. So the backward engineering could kind of, it gets you to, yes, we need to raise this money through a referendum. General obligation, we can achieve this way to borrow that money, other than the next mortgage. and general obligation, we could achieve this way to borrow that money, other than the next mortgage, the next mortgage. I feel like we're missing a piece of the equation too, which actually scares me more than the interest, which is cost of construction. And I would love to see, I don't know if you can back into it where we're not, but what is the cost of waiting? Because I feel like we've had this year, several, last this year, we've had several projects that come to us that because we waited, we've got a increased cost associated with that. And I always ask myself, question, what do I know to be true that? We've got some of the lowest interest rates around. I'm pretty sure construction costs are going to continue to rise. So I don't know if there's a, some sort of mechanism that we can see, and if you wait and follow a couple of numbers, if you're waiting every year, the cost factor is just much more money. That helps, that makes this decision, gives us more information to make this decision. But I'm sort of, and we keep talking about the school, which I don't believe is a want, but people believe it's a need. But at the top of it, the courthouse, what I've heard is, we're sort of out of our own time. You know, you can judge at any point and say, I want you to build me a courthouse. And with everything we've got going, I think that's a very real possibility. So I'm, I am sort of, well, I agree with everything you're saying, we want to have the buffer time. I'm not the, we're hurting ourselves more potentially by delaying this decision.
Let's say, there's research I've done, and I'm no expert on it, but that the fifteen to seven percent increase in loan costs right now, those kinds of things, are unique situations in the market and they likely will not continue. Now, that's what I'm reading. So I don't think, at least from what I know, it's not a factor at this point. But again, I'm not the expert, so I don't think you can assume that. I mean, yes, it's going to go up, or a few points a year, absolutely.
No, I agree. If you sort of look, and if, if, federal markets, that's a few more infrastructure products. What does that do? I agree, you look at one of them. Look at, as we've seen it with the Patterson Avenue building, where you have less people actually doing the work. So the price is going to go up because there are more infrastructure going out, more demand is hiding the work. So you continue to see these things. You know, I, I kind of feel like sooner or later, it's going to be invested in this.
Yeah, sooner would be, we decided at some point here shortly to get on the referendum number and issue shortly back in twenty years, or next capital one. And then a number of few months to design and go out of the architecture, eighty, eighteen months at least before we start to.
Exactly.
And then the second issue is about fifty, maybe several years from now. We need to, so we kind of say, if we add down, and we lock in one million today, we might have to pay up there because there's a building, we need one, we have to construct that. And then the next one is, you know, we need five, and so they hire just a lot, you know, just by, this is kind of a hedge, that's what I'm, you know, you're doing, you know, big chunks. You can make sure that the first one's digestible.
Let me ask one more question that's related, but sort of same gently. So let's say a partner comes and says, hey, if you come up with twenty million dollars, we could have everybody wire for a project. If we do this, could we come up with that money?
Yes, you have.
Up fifty, yeah.
I think it's probably there.
Yeah, exactly. But my question is, to the point, I don't think, so, you know, we've heard a lot of clear for everybody, broadband is the priority for citizens. And I think broadband and a school, and it works, it's all great. But if we were to go into this, do we have, do we have some sort of, can we find that maybe, do you have a partner where we can get ourselves their problems?
Shows up, that's the trick.
If you, like, so that's the question I would have is, is this truly, okay, this is all we're putting our money on? I know we've got ten million dollar line item in there, could we come up with that money somehow?
Depends on how much, how much we need.
How much we need, we need it.
I mean, that's really a good question.
Yeah, and a lot of that depends on, for, so the broadband question in particular is their build-up. So that's really how they structured all these brands and how much money is then needed from a locality. So that's what really the engineering studies have to take place so that we know exactly when it's going to be built down. And if we have to add more extra, we can do that. I tell you, they're not going to come online in February twenty-two, but we may need to have the dollars to go toward the projects.
So geo-bonds are probably a less expensive way to fund that.
Yeah, it's less expensive than doing a two-stage, you know, through the state agencies or two stages through the department. Less expensive.
So that seems, that seems like the referendum is in work. So then the question then becomes timing and what do we ask for? If, if we go to the community and say, one question or, you know, two or three projects, we don't have to borrow all at the same time, we have a window of time.
With like five years or something, isn't it?
Eight years, I think.
Yeah.
And then you can get a two-year extension coming to us.
So we only, I mean, even if we get the referendum, if it were to pass, isn't it going to spend the money?
Right.
Of all the money.
Right, and it doesn't mean, it certainly doesn't mean we have to borrow, borrow whatever we need, but it also doesn't mean that we have a very narrow window of time, we have plenty of time.
We have plenty of time.
Three times, three, three proof.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, what else?
Yeah.
And it's eight years, a two-year decision. Takes us through a position.
So it seems like in the next months, we're kind of, well, again, we do have some decision points and I think the more we leave our options open, the better in my sense. And then, and then we can, I think we obviously need your expertise and our advisor's expertise in, and I do like the idea of backing into the debt that we want, backing into the debt. And that gives us some options maybe to, you know, reserve some capacity or, you know, broadband.
Is there a way to get to a number of, particularly the cost of waiting? Is that something that can be done?
Well, Debbie, what is your escalation factor for construction?
So we had a decrease in inflation year over year, most year, flat, and then it was three point seven five percent. So we have not much inflation in our, whatever, net, net over the four years.
So, I mean, if you waited, you say that it would be two point seven five more, or you're saying it would be a third of that?
No, what we were given in the fall was, you know, a little bit of drop this year, flat in twenty twenty, and then three point seven five and then following year, or whatever, two point seven five and then following year a little bit more, three point five or something. But, yes, it would, it would add on, you know.
One with another now, I'm just curious if that's the one we could do.
Canceling.
Yeah, how, just say, it's trying out, it's trying out, we wait and this costs more and more.
We talk about managing projects too, the school is going to manage its own project, right? So the school will manage its project, so.
Is that true?
Yeah, what we would recommend, what I recommend to the board would be, we hire our party to walk us through that process deck and has created a process of construction manager, so to speak, to assist us in managing that major project.
A big major project like that, I mean, honestly, I, I mean, you know, I'm not saying.
We're not saying that, we would hire, you know, some perp in the works or construction management consultant to assist us with, and, you know, somebody else like this project.
It would take at least that.
No, because.
No, it's the idea, you see, actually.
Those would be, I guess.
It needs to be added, and that's.
And it's the same one, it's the same one, actually, I, on our project.
That's great, but the courthouse side is the exact same thing.
We don't, we don't have a project, but the point is, if we can get the debt in a way that we want timing and adjustments, then that's a way we can't do these projects close in time. One county project and the school, what's the pattern, right? To, 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 we're not, we're not willing to, okay, we got to wait on the courthouse until the school is done for project management purposes. I'm just trying, I'm just trying to reduce the barrier.
Sure. I don't know if we issue all of it in Austin, some of those, maybe five.
Yeah.
I don't know.
But then there goes my question, I guess your point is, it wouldn't make sense to issue that debt and hedge because we don't expect interest, I mean, so we had a system all of the way to ownership, we're going to start knocking in three years. That might change that, right?
Yeah, and this is, this is just before, but rather than try to guess and go all in, if you do half, half on the half in five years, you'll end up with a blended average of those two years. One be higher, one be lower to get the average. Rather than say, let's do all now and then turn it back, should have waited, do it all later, is that, just kind of hedge your bets.
I understand.
And then you get the blended average.
Well, waited, size of project, we're taking the bigger project on her, right?
Well, there's two of them, that's, well, they're cheap and comparable.
Yeah, like forty-one, fifty, something like that. But if you did, you could do fifty-fifty, you could do forty-five, you could do, but the idea is, you have that. Maybe we get, blend up for twenty years with the average rate of two years' cost. And maybe you better try and guess which is better, you know.
Basic, basic concept of hedging, yeah.
So we could design at a random, a basic level that be, it is comfortable and reasonable in case we borrow that money or whatever. The timing, you can do it sooner or later, we won't catch release this way down, we'll at least have money, we can roll it risk. We can get some of the projects started, they'll probably show our product status at the plate. And then digest those and make it a year or four years, take it out, look. Say, does it make sense to do the other fifty and start those projects and whatever, first one back. I will say, if you go out, you know, a hundred rooms in those ten years, with every project that you have, citizens may fall like that a little bit, you know. Gee, we're going to kitchen sinks in here, if we went out and, you know, the next five years, we've got fifty million for this project and this project, and then the rest is for general corporate purposes or things, whatever you want to call it. I think that would be more adjustable, I think, to me, like, the citizen standpoint. It's really actually, pre-approved, I think, it's going to be multiple boards, sort of, if you're, pre-approved, you got the multiple board.
My say, or, I mean, it's second word, right?
Not that they've been physically, much physically responsible, but, uh, actually, well, if you were, same, responsible.
Well, I think you, I think you make a good point, I think citizens will start to be fancy about that harmonious.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, if you make this, it'll cause somebody, you know, to be a little nervous, but.
Four-year covenant.
Yeah, exactly.
Four-year covenant, you do a hundred, it's two years, you're paying activities.
But then you start double, you know, yeah, you're going to, maybe you got a chance, thank you.
And it'll be.
Yeah, then you do, right?
During that process, can you communicate with us as a citizen?
Okay, this is a good discussion, why, Rachel, I think lots of questions, I'll turn it back over to you.
Yeah, pretty much sum it up, that you are limited as to how early you can issue debt, you can't issue debt. I think you have two years to spend it, once you issue debt, you can't just borrow the whole lot now and not do what you want.
Right.
And, and then some of the projects that we're talking about, we're just not, they're not, we're not ready, you know. I think the schools are ready to be forward of a vision on entry, but we are not ready to be forward on the courthouse or the fire station.
Right.
So if we did the referendum, if we didn't borrow next spring, maybe add cash, you guys are ready to run the call?
Definitely. Then the supervisor approval, we'd be ready to go out in the market to do non-services, construction management services, and start a, start shoot at work for this cash available to begin that, we've been waiting until boards prepare mission bonds. That's already ready.
Do you need to sustain the design for both, for the next school?
That's a possibility, certainly some jurisdictions have used the prototype of the safety.
That's not just a design. That's, and I'll play with, the kids are any more involved, the school looks like one, another, it's like, right? If there's anybody, it's increasing cost, anything we can do to cut that.
Yeah, that's a model that any jurisdiction follows, the non-cost service, something.
Are there standard, non-technical, what we value, we, we might just say like percent, other, other design, why, why this?
None that I'm aware of, we got plans for the schools last spring, they fell through, and so that would be part of our research to make sure we're making the decision to look at alternatives in other places. You know, we're going to be building a school post code, and as we discussed, I think there's different design elements that were not in existence prior to it.
Yeah, true. So let me go around with this, to you, Barbara, you, you had the, you know, guidance that you needed at this point from the board, have you heard what you needed from us?
Yes, and, and we'll, we'll call off this discussion, but yes.
Mr. Younger, you, you heard what you needed here at this board, you know, today.
For today. For today, yeah. I've heard enough of you, I've heard enough of you for today. But this, this is.
Thank you.
More than I care.
I'd like to.
I could, just one, one thing that I did want to put a little bit, is by going through referendum, you have, you have some risk and we, we will, we can talk about that, like you did, if you know another venue, but there are some risks to that, to that process. And there are other ways that we can still be able to, with more, with the school's project, put the others out a little bit, but we can talk through that, and two by twos and some of the other conversations that we can have.
Have you seen a referendum not pass?
I haven't seen a courthouse pass, that I know of, I haven't since.
Generally, yes.
Yeah.
You probably have to break out those that include tax increases and those that do not.
Correct.
Probably there.
Oh, I see, you know, it would definitely be tax.
Right, ours, ours would not include that.
That's usually, that is usually what you normally do see is you're looking to do a tax increase, that's usually what you do around there. But you have, that, that success rate of raising taxes, you know, adversity, that's successfully.
Yes, yeah, you know, like a raise of taxes, yeah.
So then, if you have to go out with children and, and with no tax increases.
I don't know. No, I just wanted to do that.
You got to believe, you got to put, you got to put. But actually, walking, he's, he's got walking prints, he's just.
It's a bike path, that's.
If you do it late. There we go.
All right, is that, is that everything that you all have to present?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good, for nothing, thank you, thank you schools for your presentations and information.
Thank you.
I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to be back for virtual town halls March twenty-third and then already April, meaning right around the corner, and that's going to be our public hearing on the. We are adjourned.